And we're live, your worship.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Clerk. Boy, that little hammer has some effect, eh? Click, 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 and here we are. All right. Good morning still. We'll call this meeting to order, the regular council meeting of November 16th. And I'll turn it over to Council de Léo for the land acknowledgement. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We begin our meeting by recognizing the First Nations Métis and Inuit Peoples of Canada as traditional stewards and caretakers of the land. We acknowledge that the town of Wasaga Beach is located within the boundaries of Treaty 18, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudinanshoni, TihoNantadi, Wendat, and is the home of many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples as part of an intricate nationhood that reaches across Turtle Island. At this time of truth and reconciliation, we welcome the opportunity to work together towards new understandings and new relationships and ask for guidance in all we do.
May I wish, Counselor, thank you very much. Moving on to -- sorry, before we move on, I think it's important that we mention the passing of a very amazing individual, Deputy Mayor Jack Conton of the town of Midland, who passed away suddenly last week. Just want his family to know that they are in our thoughts and prayers, as well as the people of Midland. Jack was a pretty amazing member of council for quite some time and then became deputy mayor in the last election. And just a wonder, if you knew Jack, you'd know exactly what I'm talking about. Just a wonderful individual. Deputy Mayor Snell's seat made at County Council and Mr. Brightman, deep thinker. And apparently, at the council meeting the night before, was even cracking some jokes and everything was fine. And the next morning, the good Lord took him. So our family here in Wasaga Beach, to the family in Midland, we feel for you. And again, you're in our thoughts and prayers. Moving on to item number two, disclosure of pecuniary interests. I have none before me. If at some point throughout the meeting you feel you have a pecuniary interest, please let us know at that time. And item number three is the approval of the agenda. Resolve that the contents of the agenda of November 16th, 2023 be approved as circulated. Any questions or comments? Move her in a second, please. Counselor Timms and Counselor de Léo, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. And we're now moving on to public meetings. We have none today. And item number five, we have presentations. We have a few of those. And the first one, 5.1, is a presentation of the Nato- Wasaga Valley Conservation Authority 2424 draft budget. So we'll ask the NBCA folks to come forward. Good morning and welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good morning. Welcome, your worship. Council, staff, it's our pleasure to be here this morning. My name is Doug Hevner. I'm the CAO. And my colleague is the Director of Corporate Affairs for our business, Sheridolf Lanigan. Presentation's just coming up momentarily. I will say it's a pleasure to be here. I'm a resident of Wasaga Beach and have lived here since 2019. Happy to make it my home. And thank you very much for all the great work that you do for our community. You can go right on to the next slide, please. Thank you very much. The Nato- Wasaga Valley is one of 18 municipal partners that we have here. Wasaga Beach makes up one of our team. We work across 3,700 square kilometers. It's a large area. We include beyond Simcoe County, portions of Dufferin County, portions of Gray County, and a small little amount of the Oro Moraine down in Callan and in Peel. We do planning review for them, although they are not a municipal member of our group. All of our members, which Counselor Belanche is your board representative at the NBCA, are elected officials. There's no one appointed to our board from the public, so it's all elected officials. We have 18 board members, just like you as councilors, serve a four-year term. Those members serve a four-year term. Here in our Wasaga Beach area, we have jurisdiction over 60 square kilometers or 100% of the town. We have shoreline work to work with, the riverine system that runs through. We're all familiar with the Nato- Wasaga Valley and the river that runs into the system. Next slide, please. Just for your own knowledge, we prepare a budget draft. When we met with the Minister of MMBCP and they were asking for background information about CAs, we created our first budget draft back in, I believe, 2017, 2018. We provided to council to give you a little bit more in depth. It's a good read. It's a good companion document for our budget. So if you haven't taken the time to look through it, I really recommend you do so. Next slide, please. This breaks out the municipal levy breakdown and how it breaks out. We provide levy to corporate services, planning and regulations, watershed science, flood operations, environmental education, forestry, environmental stewardship, and lands operations. You'll see that we're very heavily loaded in percentages of levy into administration. All the cross charges run from our administrative department throughout the whole organization. We are a science-based organization. We're heavy on staff that report and explain how the systems work to council and municipal members. Next slide, please. I'd like to go through a few accomplishments that we have here. In our watershed science team, I think it's important that we look at that. This is category three team. The government recently asked us to break out our budget into category one, or the core work that we do. Category two, work that municipal council suggests or wants us to partner to do. That could take the form of an RMO for source water protection. And category three items are things that our board or that the NBCA staff bring forward that we feel is beneficial for the betterment of the watershed. So from a watershed science portion, we use the health checks. It's a great report that community likes to see. That's what we do in watershed science. Next slide, please. Education program, you can see through the slide, we're active across the entire region. And prior to the pandemic, we were seeing as many as 12,000 students coming to educational visits. We provide grade four curriculum for Simcoe County School Board. That entails a visit to our site at the Tiffin Center and two visits to their site. We're, as you can see here, I'm very proud to say that we're educating people from as young as two and a half years old through to 90 years old. It's quite amazing to see the participation we do have. Next slide, please. Our stewardship and restoration program is something that is very important, and I think it's very important to Wasaga Beach. And that if we do have problems arise on the shoreline, or we have problems arise on the riverine system, this would be the working group that we could work with you, partner with you, to reclaim or restore damaged areas. We rely on levy for this program. Typically, in a year, we get about $150,000 in levy. And the spend in the program, after we go out and we find matching funds through private organizations, NGOs, federal government, provincial government, wherever we can find money, under any rock, we can find it. Our program typically spends anywhere from $400,000 to $1.5 million. So you can see your levy is very amplified in this particular working project. Next slide, please. Our forestry program, we deliver the managed forest program for the province of Ontario. If a landowner with over 2.2 hectares of land wanted to put in a managed forest, we could provide opportunities for that. Your levy goes into helping to subsidize funding for that and allow staff to be there to arrange all these plants. Planting window's quite small in comparison to the entire year. You can see that in 2023, we raised $342,000 with your levy funds to bring into this forestry program. Managed over 633 hectares of forest, and we work with 17 landowners in these management forest plans. Next slide, please. Flood management, I don't think I can say enough about flood management. We live on a river system that could flood. We have a lake shore that can do damage. We have wave uprush that we can deal with. Lots of things can happen. And, you know, we're not here to prevent flooding. We're here to try to work with you and work with your team to ensure that infrastructure is placed in the proper location, where there isn't erosion hazard, where there isn't flood uprush that can damage that infrastructure. We want it to be here for our grandchildren, and that's the role that we want to play in that. Next slide, please. Planning and development, we work very closely with your planning team, as we do with all our municipal councils. There's been a lot of movement there. Bill 23, Bill 109, the changes that have happened there. Our budget takes into consideration these changes, and we've planned for them. We're working on the Watson Report that we just spent almost a year and a half doing, where we did a really forensic look into our planning costs. We've had quite a fulsome discussion at our board, talking about planning. And you'll see this budget reflects an injection of cash to allow to grow that program so that we can help you meet these new timelines associated with Bill 109 and other bills the government's brought forward. Next slide, please. Conservation lands, we own lands. We try to own lands that are passive. Lands, passive lands can act as areas to protect native habitat, protect riverine systems, protect landscape features in the landscape. We also have areas that are active land uses. Like you get out to the bluffs in Nato- Wasaga, beautiful area there, lovely walks to the keyhole. Pattoon is another one that's really quite nice. The Minising Wetland, the canoeing that happens in that area, we own about 6,000 acres in the Minising Wetland. We're one of the three major landholders there. NCC and the Ministry of Natural Resources would be the other. We maintain trails. We work with people to get out into the environment. During the pandemic, we really saw that. Really saw people going out and visiting. Next slide, please. So I'm going to pass this over to my colleague Cheryl. She's going to take you through our budget numbers. And thank you very much for your time this morning. I'd be happy to answer any questions later.
Good morning, and through the mayor to council. Thank you again for letting us be here. The process for our draft budget starts in June, where staff start doing all the behind-the-scenes work. And then in August, we come to the board with a guideline report saying this is kind of where we're looking to be. What are your thoughts on it? This year, staff are asking for a $200,000 increase to our levy. This year's staff were asking for a two hundred thousand dollar increase to our levy. After a lot of discussion, the board actually came back at us with four hundred thousand dollars so that we could add two positions to our planning and regulations team. As our CIO spoke to already, there's been a lot of changes with some of the bills that have come down. We're also one of the fastest-growing areas in all of Ontario and we are struggling to keep up with the amount of applications that are coming through the door. After that meeting, we were then taken back to, to finish our budget and we brought forward a draft budget in September where it was ratified for distribution to our municipalities. As per the Conservation Authorities Act, we are required to give thirty days of review period to our municipalities. The NVCA understands that can be challenging for some of our smaller municipalities that don't meet as often. So we actually gave eight weeks and then in December, the board will come back, review any comments that have been received and process the budget. Next slide, please. So as our CIO alluded to, a lot of things have changed this year with the addition of the categories one, two, and three. We are required for the first time to actually break out our budget and show the differences. So our framework has completely changed. So in our draft budget booklet, you'll see a category one budget and then a categories two and three budget. Category two has no levy associated to it. It's a hundred percent done through agreements with a municipality for a pay-for-service. So we lumped two and three together just to make it a little bit easier. And then category three is the levy that you're seeing in the request for in the category two and three budget. We're also including a draft budget that combined both budgets just because a lot of municipalities are still used to how we, how we did it before. So we wanted you to be able to compare kind of an apples-to-apples look. So that's why you'll see three different versions of our budget in the draft budget booklet. Next slide, please. NVCA staff are also completing the twenty twenty-four budget with the assumption that all municipalities will be supportive of the MOUs, given for a couple of reasons. The first one is over seventy percent of our municipalities at this point have either fully executed an MOU or have told us that they are going to be executing an MOU. If this is not the case, our board has approved the use of reserves to cover the year in twenty twenty-four for any levy that would be lost and then we'll make any changes to that in our twenty twenty-five budget. A really important thing to note, and this is a little bit confusing, but our programs and our budgets are very much interlinked. When we have to make changes to a category one or a category three item, that can affect the opposite one due to all the cross-charges and admin charges. Counselor Belange saw this when we did our draft budget initially, when we switched from the two hundred to the four hundred thousand dollar increase to levy because the amount of cross-charges that were needed in category three actually dropped because of the two new positions that were created in the category one. So therefore, more cross-charges were covered through category one. Another really important thing to note for the NVCA is that category three actually subsidizes category one by about a hundred and fifty thousand. So what that means is that category three takes the levy that is received, it goes out, it creates more levy as our CIO spoke to through like our stewardship, our education programs, and then they actually have a hundred and fifty dollar surplus that is then given to the category one to reduce the amount of levy that is required in our category one. Next slide, please. So our twenty twenty-four draft budget as presented, the Wasaga Beach portion at this point for category one is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. For the categories two and three is thirty thousand, eighty-three dollars for a total ask of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars operationally. Next slide, please. As we've spoken to a couple of times already, the NVCA really does take the funds that we receive through levy and leverage them. So we take the municipal investment this year of the levy of just over three point one million and we get the tiny sliver that we get from the province for our flood forecasting and then add that with any federal grants, any other grants that we receive through other NGOs, third parties, et cetera, as well as our user fees, and we get that investment to grow to almost six point five million dollars for our twenty twenty-four budget. Next slide, please. One of the things the NVCA has always done is really tried to be cognizant of what the individuals in each municipality is paying. And our levy is broken down by current value assessment. That's how it's done through M and RF. They send us a spreadsheet every year telling us how much each municipality has their percentage apportionment. So what we've done is we've further broken down our levy per a hundred thousand of CVA to see kind of how it's changed over the years. And as you can see, in twenty thirteen, we were as high as five dollars and fifty-seven cents per hundred thousand. We have dropped quite significantly, significantly since then. In twenty twenty-three, we were down to four point, or four dollars and ninety-four cents. We are up slightly this year, but we're still below where we were in twenty thirteen. Next slide, please. So this calculation is not scientific or anything at all. It's just we take the number of residents that M and RF tells us are in our jurisdiction. We take our total levy and divide it by those number of residents. This is just something that we found has really helped the individual residents understand a little bit more of how they're contributing to the NVCA. So if you look at our total budget, categories one, two, and three, the total that each resident would be paying is fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. And then you can see in that graph that we've broken it down a little bit more by each department. Next slide, please. Of that fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents, thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents of that is towards category one programs. So it just shows you that we're really spending the money we're receiving where we are required to be spending that money. Next slide, please. Categories two and three, you'll see that the cost is a dollar fifty-eight per resident out of that fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. And you can see again, just the breakdown of how it goes to each of the individual departments. Next slide, please. So we've had an asset management plan in place for about six years now and I believe Wasaga Beach is one of the ones that phased in. We're done the phase-in process now. However, we did have to make changes again this year related to categories one and categories three, so we had to split all of our assets. So it's still the same number of assets, just shown differently to you in the budget. Category one assets are, Wasaga Beach's portion is twelve thousand, forty-two dollars and categories three, or category three is one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. And as you can see, there's some scheduled capital projects for next year. The dam safety reviews are some pretty expensive ones. They're ones that were legislated to do. We have to make sure that all of our dams and dikes are in proper working order. There are also some severe aging infrastructure, so there's some work we're having to do on those as well. Next slide, please. So this is a total request for twenty twenty-four for the NVCA's budget. The total operating levy for categories one, two, and three is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and five. An asset management of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for a total request of three hundred and five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's our last slide, so if there's any questions, we'd like to open it up now.
Thank you very much and we'll now ask members of council if they have questions or comments. Counselor Belange.
Yes, thank you through the mayor. It's been a privilege to be on the Board of Directors of the NVCA and I guess there is a tremendous amount of very positive work done by the NVCA that I think most of us take for granted. On the other hand, what we tend to hear a lot about is the process of applications and permits. And because we are such a fast-growing part of the country and that we have tremendous increase in applications, we have had situations where there are delays and again with Bill one oh nine, there's financial considerations that could impact us. So, so the board was, I would say, almost, not unanimous, but a very high majority to say, let, let's make an investment into that process to ensure that, that we can do a better job on timely application and permits. And hopefully through that process, there'll be a lot more focus on the tremendous work that is done. We are at, this entire watershed dumps into the bay at Wasaga Beach. And so a lot of things that occur, good or bad, upstream, they, they impact us and they can impact our, hopefully ever-increasing recreational revenues and those types of things. So I, I will say that I think if everyone saw the level of detail that I've seen in some of the projects of restoring riverbanks and stream beds and, and many, many more, I think they would be much more appreciative to this investment. So anyhow, I hope that, I certainly support this budget and I, I think for everyone, as I'm, I'm just as vocal at the NVCA as I am in council. So anyhow, I'll leave it at that.
So on that point, we feel free. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I also support this budget in making the investment, especially for the additional staff, because I too have heard from several residents, because we, we have our beautiful river running right through our community. We've got a lot of waterfront properties here that have to go through your application process. And, and I was aware of one resident in particular that reached out in frustration because their application sat for a year and their young family was almost homeless, you know, because they had rented a spot in anticipation of being able to actively start constructing and there were significant delays and whatnot. So I think for the ease of convenience and the development in our community, this is a really great investment.
Thank you, Deputy Snell. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I do have a couple and I too sat on this board at one time and so I have the utmost respect for the work that the NVCA does and, and to Counselor Belange's point, there's a ton of work that the NVCA does outside of our eyesight, if you will, that we, we don't recognize, but we certainly feel or benefit from not only when things are done and completed, but for many years moving forward. But the one thing I heard, I've heard for many years and I'm still hearing today, only it seems to be getting worse, not better, is the amount of time it's taken for applications and permits. And, and I'm sorry to say, but a year is just totally unacceptable and it's not the first case that I've heard of that has taken a year. And so, you know, I, I've heard in the past where the NVCA has come to the, to the townships and the municipalities and, and said, we need more money to improve upon this and unfortunately we haven't seen that improvement. So there's certainly obviously some internal issues that need to be delved into and looked at there, but that's, I have enough of my own problems here. I'll let you deal with yours there. At the end of the day, I do struggle to say, okay, here's another four hundred thousand dollars, which if we're looking at the, the operating levy alone is about a sixteen percent increase. That's, that's a substantial increase. And are we assured that hiring these few extra staff members is, I mean, it all helps, but is it enough? And, and we can feel for you here in the town of Wasaga Beach. This municipality has, from a staffing standpoint, run very, very lean for a long, long time and this council is committed to trying to increase that so as that we can get things done that need to get done in a timely manner and serve our residents to the best of our ability. And that's certainly, in my opinion, where the NVCA needs to get to and needs to get to to its suite. I understand all the issues, but people, when we're waiting on permits, they're waiting to start building their home to live in and there's a financial impact when that holdup is there. So I am struggling a bit. I just, a couple of questions if I may. How many applications per year for residential-type applications are you folks dealing with currently? You know?
Excuse me, your mayor, I don't have that number on the tip of my tongue, but I do have his number that we just shared with our board. From two thousand and eighteen to current time, we've, we've seen seventeen thousand requests for information, pre-consults, permitting aspects, with one engineer staff increase in that time. So you did speak to the, the timing and that. There's a system set up by the province of Ontario called the KELC. It's a ninety days on a development permit. For twenty twenty-two, we haven't processed our numbers for twenty twenty-three, but for twenty twenty-two, on a ninety-day permit across our jurisdiction, we delivered that in ninety-eight percent of the time. In sixty days, we delivered that in ninety-three percent of the time. So we're, we're getting there, but unfortunately, what councillors hear about isn't the ninety-seven percent that we got done. You're hearing about the three percent out of this seventeen thousand total of requests and information. It took us a year. It took time. And there's a, really a challenge to understand that you can't lay that all on the municipal partner, you can't lay that all on the, the NVCA, you can't lay that all on the consultant. It's a shared usage of time. The clock runs when the NVCA has the file. We have no control over a third-party contractor or delegate representing a proponent on getting back to us. I have a file right now, today, you sent out ten requests for information, comments back on a file. Eight are reported, two aren't reported. Those two are crucial to the fruition and the issuance of the development permit or the permit it's, for this associated with. Can't move forward and we can't make the person give us that information, but we still have to have the information. So that's how the time chain runs out. And it's, it's a feeble excuse. I've had this conversation with Counselor Belange over and over. I'm an entrepreneur, I operate my own business. The customer is right. We have to provide service to the customer. You're our customer and we're trying and we're hoping that through this evaluation that Watson did, it's going to bring us closer to a hundred percent. Will we get there? I, we're the organization that says no, so I don't think we'll ever get there. I think you'll always have that thorn rubbing you the wrong way and I'm apologetic for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for that explanation. So my next, the next part of my question then is, you know, so seventeen thousand, it's about thirty-seven hundred and seventy-five applications annually and what percentage of those would be Wasaga Beach?
I, I don't have that number with me. I can get it for you. We, we just did the same thing. Couple of days later, we sent it to Springwater. In Springwater, they read fifty-eight permits, ninety-six percent completion in ninety days, ninety-one percent in, in sixty days. So we can get that information for you, mayor.
So I may suggest then that you do provide us with that information and maybe good to provide municipalities with that in future years. So as the council has that information about Wasaga Beach, I'd like to see that, if you don't mind. And, and I understand completely your point where, you know, people or developers aren't getting back to, we face it, we face it in municipalities well and, and they are those few offs. My concern is that I unfortunately hear this a lot more than, I, I hear it about our town as well, but I hear it a lot more with respect to the NVCA. So, and I know you're working on it and I can appreciate that and, and it's not easy. So, oh, sorry, I'll let the deputy mayor, another question or comment? No, I'm good.
Thank you, your worship. Sorry. I just had a question. This council was discussing in our last meeting around Bill one oh nine and, and the financial impact that that might have on, on our operations in regards to having to give back fees when, when processes are delayed. Working with, you know, third-party organizations like yourselves, this is again, just another emphasis on that efficiency piece that I think the mayor was speaking about because your municipal partners are going to be financially impacted and the rate pairs are going to be financially impacted if there are significant delays or inefficiencies within the operations of not only yourself, but all other outside organizations as well. So just a further comment, thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Through the mayor, if I may, to Counselor Snell, thank you for your, your concern and your question. And in order to try to fight that or, or work to improve that, we've set up a ROTA of five outside consultants that if we get stacked, we can send information out. We're trying to do that. We're trying to develop a, a very fulsome pre-consult that we can do so we can work. And I know that when I talk to most of our municipal partners, that's how their planning teams are really looking at things. Before we issue, the permit starts, we're going to have a really great understanding of pre-consulting. And we've also set up a, a four-hour weekly triage session where we look at files and say, how can we kick this file out? What, you know, is there something, how can we move this along faster? And that's something we haven't done in the past. We're, we're seeing that, that helping the situation. So we're trying and we're going to try to work our best with your team. They're a great team to work with and very happy to do so.
Thank you, CIO Hevner. Deputy Mayor Snell, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick little follow-up. I appreciate that comment and, you know, especially in regards to... I appreciate that comment and, you know, especially in regards to, again, kicking out files as quickly as possible and keeping that machine moving, because, you know, that's obviously not something that we're wanting to see our residents experience. Is some of these processes going to be addressed in your Watson report that you mentioned? In terms of efficiencies and sort of looking at where are the breaks or the cracks in your system or your processes?
It was identified to us. That's how we formulated the work, and that's how we've made the work. That's how we discerned that we needed planners and regulations people in these positions. We reevaluated the time handling in each through regulations, planning, engineering. The whole focus was on that. And it was on, are we efficient? Are we not efficient? That was the crucial question.
Thank you. And now back to Counsel Belanger.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I do want to qualify a few things, because there's been some serious discussion. The measurement of the 60-day and the 90-days, I have a little difficulty with, and I've brought that forward to the NVCA, because they start the clock on a complete application. And through the process of getting to a complete application, sometimes it's an external problem to the NVCA that causes the delay. But sometimes, when it's not complete, obviously, the engineers go on to work on another file. And when that file comes back with more information, it might take two or three weeks before they can get to it. And that's not included in the timeline. So one of the things I've requested is time from original receipt of an application to the time a decision was made. So that we can... Not just so that we can say, "Hey, it's a longer period of time," but that we can clearly identify where the problems were. And often, it's not the NVCA. Of all the residents that have contacted me, which are many with concerns of the NVCA, as you peel the onion, you find out there's a lot of information they don't tell you that was their responsibility and their consultant that caused the delay. So I think we're really addressing that and looking at that. And I hope that the next time we come before council, we'll have maybe a measurement from receipt of application to final decision, because I think that's ultimately the real important one. And the quality of pre-consultation and better communication with the municipalities, we'll see that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. You raise a very good point, and I know that our planning department works the same way. When we say an application, we expect a fully completed application that is ready to go, and we can get that process pretty quick. But often, that is not the case. And so what I'd say to that is knowledge is power, especially for the municipality and members of council when they're getting these concerns and questions and complaints. And so if you could maybe think about finding a way to track that. So if we do have a concern, we can call and say, "What's the issue?" At least we can go back to those individuals and say, "Well, you know, yeah, you did start on January 1st, but you didn't have a completed application, and it took you this long to get back," and so on and so forth. We could beat this horse all day long, I'm sure. But thank you very much for your presentation. Again, we acknowledge what you do is great work, and we don't envy you. And have a great day. Go ahead, CAO.
If I may, I alluded to the fact that I live in Wasaga Beach. I chose Wasaga Beach to live in strategically, because this is the most at-risk community in the entire watershed that I work in. I could have lived anywhere in this watershed. I chose to live here because I met the staff, I worked with the staff for a year and a half before I moved here, and I'm confident that we can make the correct decisions with the help of our municipal partners to protect communities that are at risk. And I want to live here for a long time. This is my final home, I hope, and thank you for your time.
All right, great. Sorry, one last thing, if you could just let us know. It doesn't have to be today, but how many of your 16 municipality partners currently have an MOU with you?
Currently, we have six signed-executed. We have four additional, so that's 10 that have been given... The mayor and the clerk have been given power to execute. We have two others that have... We've had conversations with that are taking recommendations to council that we sign the MOU. One of the MOUs has gone from MOU to just a statement or agreement of amateurization for all the Category 3 programs. We have one community in Springwater that has initially suggested they may not support Category 3 at all, although we've had follow-up from them this week that's indicated they may change that decision. ESSA has indicated that they potentially may not support all of the programs, and Mollmer has indicated they may not support all of the programs. But we're... Over 70% of our jurisdiction is supportive of the work that we do in Category 1, 2, and 3.
Great, thank you very much. And again, have a great day. Thanks for coming. All right, we do have a motion that the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council receive the presentation from the NVCA pertaining to the 2024 draft NVCA budget. Questions or comments? Move her in a second, or please. Counselor Ego... Oh, sorry, Counselor Belanger and Counselor DeLeo, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to 5.2 presentations. We now have a presentation from the Youth Centre about the multi-phased landscaping plan. Who's going to look after that for us? There he is. Josh, come on forward. Welcome, Josh. And who's with you?
Still the CAO's mic. Good morning, your worship, and members of council. Today, we're here to discuss some landscape improvements at the 1621 Mosley Street and Seniors Active Living Centre. These enhancements for outdoor passive recreation are for our local youth, seniors, and the 39th Street Christopher neighborhood. I'd like to introduce Eric Calvins. He's the Principal Landscape Architect of Budreviks and Associates, and he'll walk you through the study that was done on this.
Good morning, everyone.
Welcome, Eric.
I am, as Josh mentioned, I'm the Principal Landscape Architect at Alexander Budreviks and Associates Landscape Architects. We're a landscape architectural firm serving Ontario for nearly 60 years now, so making us one of the longest-standing, if not the longest-standing in Canada. Generally, our focus is on trying to get projects built in a cost-effective manner for our clients, and I think this project was right up our alley when we were awarded it. Personally, I have significant experience working with seniors and youth and various groups, so found this project quite interesting to begin with. If you can get the next slide, please. I'll just quickly take you through our project scope and then the process that we followed for consultation, the conceptual design, and a bit on the budget and phasing. Next slide, please. So originally, our scope that we were brought on to was to carry out consultation with the community. We'll get into how that was broken down. Once the consultation was completed, we created a conceptual design based on that input, and then finally put a budget to it and prioritized the various upgrades. Next slide, please. So the way we did this consultation was through one day, we had three general groups, seniors, youth, and then the general community. The way we did this was had a focused discussion in the community centre, speaking with the stakeholders to guide them through options on the site, kind of actively drawing with input and kind of very interactive procedure. And then taking that, we generated a survey just to find a more general approach to how the space is being used and get some community input. So as a result of this... Let's go to the next slide, please. As a result of this, we came up with this general plan for the allocation of the space and really focusing on using existing elements and shifting some things, optimizing the usage of the property, and addressing the needs of the user groups. So I'll quickly take us through what we were looking at. So generally, a large... We found in the consultation process, there was a large focus on how the parking area was used. The seniors were using it quite a bit for parking, naturally, because they were getting there. The youth, not as much. So around 3 o'clock, the parking lot would empty out, and it was a largely unallocated space. In the existing condition, there's a basketball court on the upper part of the plan that does take up a lot of space, and then it's no storage, and as you know, is a bit of an issue here and other features. So the way we've reorganized this was to shift the parking lot... Sorry, basketball court to the end of the parking lot, making that more multi-use throughout the year so that it's protected from snow clearing, allocating parking on either side. I think we actually got a couple more spaces in this configuration as it's been reworked. And then started focusing on features that were identified by the various groups. The youth were looking for a kind of outdoor seating areas and places where they could go and congregate and mingle, whether as a part of organized activities or just as little breakout groups. The seniors similarly also liked that kind of approach, but they also had a bit more of focus on the lawn area in the front. Noise was raised as a concern from Mosley Street, and so we are looking at a couple of little features to mitigate that. But budget-wise, noise mitigation was a... is a large thing, so we're trying to cut that as much as possible, but focused more on programming elements and how this thing can be used. So we did come up with this list of eight priorities to work on. So the basketball, pickleball court, youth seating area, accessible areas for seating that were brought into the parking lot, community garden areas to expand on. Right now, the clubhouse has a little space just above it right now, but bringing that out and making it more accessible, an amphitheater space and podium that could be used for kind of outdoor presentations and gatherings. As I said, making the front lawn more multi-use, some seating areas in shade, and then finally a little corner deck, but that's more outside of the scope of this project. If we get the next slide, please. So then finally, the last exercise of this was the phasing and how to address these priorities. So Phase 1, we're looking at doing this over a three-year build-out, so that we're not having a big chunk in one go. But Phase 1 would be the basketball and the seating area. That's all focusing on the parking lot where the most usability and it presented the largest opportunity for enhancement. And then Phase 2 gets into the kind of smaller distributed items, like the accessible picnic area garden, shifting the front lawn and the seating nooks. And then finally, Phase 3 was the amphitheater seating area on the west side of the property. Not included in this was the deck space. That's part of a separate budget for Josh. So that's kind of a quick summary of what the work was.
All right, thank you. Actually, anything else to add, Josh? All right, questions or comments from members of council? Counsel Ego?
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I have to say, one of the best parts of getting on council is having the privilege to go to the Youth Centre now and then. I really hadn't been in there, and what a great facility it is. And not just the Youth Centre, the Seniors Activity Living Centre. So I certainly support this. And I do think I have my numbers correct, that we're to like 2,000 visits a month through that facility?
We're just about 1,000 visits a month right now and growing from there. I think our programs are filling quicker and quicker in that facility. I would anticipate that we're seeing probably close to 15 to 18 by the end of next year the way program growth is projected right now.
Thank you, Josh. So that being said, this is more than just... Yeah, well, you've shown the increase that the use will be outside, so it's for the youth, the seniors, the residents that live close by. I mean, it's just a win-win situation for all, I believe, and beautifully done. And so I'm excited about that, and you can see the need, and the use is there. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ego. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Chanel?
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counsel Ego. It was lovely coming to your anniversary, and it's been so awesome as a resident to watch how this facility has morphed over time. And the decision to move it to an active living centre recreation space during the day while the youth are in school was absolutely brilliant. You can see that utilization out of this facility is 100%. And it makes sense, given the high-profile location of it being on a main thoroughway through town, to do some significant enhancements. And I really like that the Phase 1 that you're suggesting has the youth focus, right? Utilizing that low-hanging fruit of the parking lot that's not utilized when the kids are there. My question is, I think this could also... I always talk about sponsorship, 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 but, you know, with the amphitheater, for example, like that nice feature, or the garden, where I'm assuming that, you know, you do a lot of cooking programs and stuff for both youth and seniors, where they'll grow their own vegetables for that program. Those could be some easy sponsorship opportunities. Have you thought about that? Have you put a price... Are you starting to look at putting prices on each of those pieces to see what can be raised in the community for those additions to contribute? Thank you.
Through you, your worship, to Deputy Mayor Chanel. We do have sort of a really good cost breakdown of all these elements in place already. We have not went as far as producing a sponsorship plan yet. We have had a lot of luck with local service clubs in the past, getting involved with youth initiatives and even with passive outdoor recreation spaces such as the skateboard park. So that's something that we could definitely add to our 2024 calendar to start getting on Rotary and Lions Club's agenda to make these presentations.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I think that would be fantastic, because as we all know, with the investment that the community has made in the Twin Patterina and Library, you know, a significant portion of those funds, as our treasurer reported, you know, has come from the Parks Reserve, right, for playgrounds and things like that. So I think as an organization, we need to get creative at how we are able to financially still move forward with the plans so that we don't get too far behind on these playgrounds and park amenities and not be dependent on the taxpayer necessarily. So I think we... Any creativity, and you're right, the Rotary and Lions, there's so many great organizations that are very supportive of our young people in our community. So thank you. I appreciate that creativity.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Chanel. Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, I just... I don't visit it a whole lot, but I've been there many times over the last couple of years, and it's always a beehive of activity. I just wanted to point out, these are one of the strategic investments that really enhances the lives of our residents. Counselor Ego and I recently saw the enhancements in front of the Recplex Playground, and I swear there were at least 50 kids there the day I was there. And it's just great when we make an investment and it's utilized as well as what the Youth Centre is being used. So I think this will just enhance it even further. So thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, I do... I'm looking at the motion here, and it's asking that we receive this for information. I think we're looking at a total cost here of about, what, 125K?
Through you, your mayor, it is... So the total cost for the plan is 133.29, and it's to be subject to future budget approvals.
So we didn't have this in this year's budget, clearly. Is there a reserve for this?
Your worship, there is not a reserve specific for this purpose. However, there is a recreation reserve that is available with some funding in it. This is a project that was slated to be phased over multi-years, and those years' budgets have not yet come forward. So when those... We are not doing multi-year budgeting at this time yet, so we only approve the budget for the current year. So when these projects now come forward in their current budget years, that's when they would be addressed and approved.
So my question is, how many years is going to take us, then, to get this project completed?
The phased... Through you, your worship, the phased approach for this is three years. I think staff do have to do some research and maybe get back to council on how long this would actually take to complete.
All right, so I understand that the information is... I'm asking this information so the public can hear it and see it, because I think that this is one of those situations where if we can, we should be accelerating this. I think to other members of council's points here, this is an important sector in our community. It's a big part of many youth's lives, and I'm sure it's going to be a big part of youth in the future as well. So I'd like to see something like this more accelerated as opposed to us looking at this over another three to five years. All right, I do have a motion then. Pardon me. The Joint Committee let the report titled "Phased Landscape Plan for 1621 Mosley Street Facility" to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council meeting of November 16, 2023 be received for information. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, a mover and a second, or please. Deputy Mayor Chanel and Counsel White, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six, delegations. 6.1, we do have another presentation today from the Georgian Triangle Humane Society. We'll ask those ladies to come forward. Good day again, and welcome. And the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll start again. Good morning. My name is Sonia Reichel, and I'm the Executive Director with the Georgian Triangle Humane Society. I'm here today... I'm here today with our colleague Mel, and she is going to be giving our presentation today. She is the team lead for our Regional Center for Pets and People Project. Today, we have in front of you an amended budget request. I, I was before this council not too long ago, and we have subsequently done some work behind the scenes that we would like to present to council today. So without further ado, over to Mel.
Thank you, Sonya. Thank you, your worship and council, for having us today. As Sonya mentioned, I oversee our fundraising efforts at the Georgian Triangle Humane Society, but that is not my only connection to our organization. I'm also a proud adopter, an active volunteer, and of course, a donor as well. And I'm really honored to be here today to tell you a little bit about our project and the benefits that it will serve your community. So as many of you know, we operate an animal center out of Collingwood, but we serve a much larger region than that. If we can go to the next slide, you'll see that our, our main communities we cover are Wasaga Beach, Gray Highlands, Beaufort, Town of Blue Mountains, Clearview, and of course, Collingwood where our animal center is located. We've been providing services to these communities for over 20 years, and we're proud to continue to do so. But we are facing an urgent issue right now in our animal center where we are serving beyond capacity. Our current facility was designed for about 500 animals to be supported through our programs every year, and we are on track for 2023 to about 4,000 pets. If we can go to the next slide, I'd love to tell you a little bit about what we do for the pets and people of our communities. So I think we're well-known as an animal shelter where lost pets or pets needing to be surrendered by their families can go to receive care, shelter, and find new homes. We also work with families to prevent animals from ever needing to come to our center. About 1,500 pets are adopted out every year, and about 3,000 avoid our shelter by accessing some of the outreach programs and services that we offer. That includes things like our pet pantry, which has served over 20,000 meals to date. We're about 5,000 meals ahead of where we were last year. And as we know, when food insecurity impacts people, it also impacts pets. This also includes programs like emergency boarding, so residents that are facing housing issues, maybe due to housing transition, fleeing domestic violence, perhaps a medical emergency or fire, they have somewhere they can trust their pets to and then be reunited and avoid surrender. We operate an accredited animal hospital on-site, providing over 2,500 spay and neuter surgeries to our community every year. Not only part of responsible pet ownership, which we know is important to your municipality, and it, it also really helps to mitigate future issues, control our pet population, and help the sustainability of our organization. Other things include accessible vaccinations, being able to access medical care, behavioral support, and another unknown program and service we offer is our youth programs. We have over 2,000 youth accessing our humane education programs, both in schools and after school. Not only where they're able to develop social and emotional skills, also sometimes employable skills through things like our Vets of Tomorrow program or in their volunteer hours. There's quite a few other items that are listed up there, and we're really proud to offer a variety of services for both pets and people. If we can go to the next slide. This gives you a snapshot of our current reality. We know that the population of people in our region has been growing steadily as represented by the census turquoise blocks there. Steady growth in population over the last few years. What you may not know is the extreme boost or boom that we've had in, in the pets needing our services at the GTHS, which is represented by that thinner line there out front. And as I said, in the facility designed for 500 pets, we are currently serving over 4,000 this year. If we can go to the next slide. What that means for us is that we are quite literally bursting at the seams. You can see here pets recovering from surgery in our hallways. We've got kennels in our garage. We are grateful for all of the foster families who help us to serve beyond capacity by providing support for animals in their homes. We know our kennels are in disrepair. Our clients are coming in discussing very personal and challenging situations in public hallways, in busy areas. We lack parking and also safe walking space outdoors for the pets who are living on-site with us. But we do have a solution. Next slide, please. Our hope for the future is the new Regional Center for Pets and People. We currently own about five acres of land on Sanford Fleming Drive in Collingwood, and our dream is to build a 19,000-square-foot facility that will allow us to continue the great work that we do and prepare for the growth of the future. Not only is it going to address some of the key issues that we talked about in terms of providing a better experience for our clients, a safer experience for our pets, outdoor walking trails, and expanded parking, it's going to drastically increase the metrics and the numbers that are happening in our center each and every day. If we can go to the next slide, it'll give you an indication of where that growth is. We anticipate that the community room and the programs that we're able to offer in our center is going to triple the number of youth on-site, up to 6,000 youth every year accessing programs, and also expand the humane education programs that we offer to seniors in our community. We anticipate over 2,000 families being helped in times of crisis. We'll be able to double the number of animals that are sheltered in our facility, nearly triple the number of spay and neuter surgeries provided through our hospital, increase our staffing and volunteer opportunities, and we anticipate between 30 and 40,000 visitors will be coming to the Regional Center for Pets and People every single year. Next slide, please. We know that this is important to your municipality. We overlap in, in quite a few key areas of interest. Animal control and bylaw enforcement, of course, being the obvious portion where our work intersects. Public health is another. And of course, as you can see from some of the, the pieces we've discussed here today, there's some, some interesting economic interest as well, and especially seeing the number of families who are pet owners in our community. It's a significant part of our local economy, both directly through things like vets, sorry, vets, doggy daycares, grooming services, and also indirectly for fencing companies, maintenance, cleaning, and a variety of other businesses that depend on this thriving part of our community. Next slide, please. What you can see here, and I know that this was shared with you earlier this year, some of the breakdown of our 2022 numbers, so looking specifically to Wasaga Beach, this is just in 2022, nearly 50 of our volunteers are, are coming from your region into our Collingwood Center to give their time for the pets and people in need. You can see the number of microchips that are provided here, so over 200 people being helped through our pet support services clinics, nearly 400 spay and neuter surgeries. The, the future value of that is exponential when you look at the number of pets per litter that we are helping to control in, in the near future. And then, of course, the number of intakes and stray cats and dogs coming to our facility from your community. And again, this is 2022, we've seen significant growth this past year. Next slide, please. What we've done is put together a proportional ask for each of the six municipalities that we serve, taking into consideration the 2022 average assessment as well as a proportional percentage of your population. Our total ask for all six municipalities to bring this dream to life is $1.5 million over 10 years, which is about 9.3% of our total project cost. This is estimated right now at about $16 million to complete the build with the full five-acre development and the high-end materials we need to operate an accredited animal hospital. For Wasaga Beach, what we're asking for is consideration for $30,000 per year over the next 10 years, and today we request that you make a motion to bring that to your budget deliberations. If we can go to the next slide, please. This outlines a little bit of what I've just said. $30,000 is our ask for your consideration for your 2024 budget year. This gift over 10 years is a total of $300,000 towards our $16 million building. And on the next slide, we'd like to recognize that this is an opportunity for us to continue working together with our municipalities in many ways. All of our municipal partners will be featured along the outside corridor of our building. This building will have two entrances, one to our canine center and hospital, and another to the animal shelter and animal center side where we, where we host our adoptions. And in between this covered corridor, we'll have reserved space for each of our municipalities, as you can see on the next slide, to be recognized with a plaque and an opportunity to share information with the community in, in a sheltered display unit here. We hope that you'll give thoughtful consideration to this ask, and on behalf of all of the pets and people at the Georgian Triangle Humane Society, I just want to thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mel. Excellent presentation. You've done this before, clearly.
This is actually my first one, so.
Oh, is that, wow, you're a superstar. Good for you, absolutely. Questions or comments? Counselor White?
Thank you, your worship, through you. Great presentation. Mayor, you caught that correctly. And what a great service you provide for the many municipalities in, in Georgian Triangle. I can appreciate you needing to expand your facilities. One of our daughters was a volunteer while she was in her university years at, at the animal hospital, so. But that said, I'm here to advocate for the residents and taxpayer of Wasaga Beach, and although your request is not out of line in any way, shape, or form, I want to encourage you to consider how events are run, that you run through your facility and spread them out as well throughout the area. I just took a quick glance at your website when you put this on the agenda. You did a furball, the annual furball at the Georgian Peaks Club there in Craig Leith, golf event at Blue Mountain Golf Club in Collingwood. There's a walk at the Collingwood Brewery, Pooch Picks at Stainer Tourism Center. There's a beer can promo at the Collingwood Brewery, and an online yoga on your website, and those are all great, and I hope that they returned a great deal of fundraising efforts for you. But considering a lot of your money comes from fundraising, I'm encouraging strongly to have a little bit more of your own events in, in our community as well, too. I believe we have a new facility that we just painstakingly asked the taxpayer to, to fund in, in its entirety, and I can understand how difficult it is to, to build a new one. Now, there are other fundraising things that do happen here. I understand that there are some self-driven, like whatever, community-based organizations. I think Grandma's Beach Treats held, held an event recently, which is great. But I'd like to see a little bit more from, from you guys as we're, as you're gonna ask for funds from us, we're gonna ask for you to share the, the awareness, get the grassroots going, bring some events to Wasaga Beach to help us be able to afford the, the $30,000 you're asking for in next year's budget. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Delo?
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. As you are aware from last time, I'm a huge animal lover. You came to my, you came to my rescue actually a couple of years ago. I found a stray little white kitten, very sick, and I called your facility, and you guys took her in, and you helped her, so thank you for that. Your facility is phenomenal. The work you do, I, I can't thank you enough for that. I agree with Counselor White. If you do fundraising here in Wasaga Beach, I'm in totally. Like, I'll do whatever I can to help out. You've got my full support for this facility. I think we need it, it's time, and, you know, the amount of pets that you take in is incre- and I love your, your programs for the children, how to handle the animals, because a lot of kids don't know, and the fact that you're offering this education is really good. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delo. Counselor Ego?
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Well, for your first presentation, it was excellent. Thank you. I agree with Counselor White. I, fundraising would raise awareness in this community. It's a win-win situation, from what I see. And another fundraiser that we do here now is the Red Shoe Walk, and I do have to speak on your behalf, that I've sat on a shelter board for many, many years for abused women and children, and that it is really heartwarming to know that those families escaping abuse can take their dogs or their pets to the shelter. So you are part of that, and I think if you work that together, you could just maybe, you know, raise awareness on many levels here and have a fundraiser. So I support Counselor White on that. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Balaji?
Thank you, through you, the mayor. I, I like your change in, I guess, tactic over a 10-year period. 30,000 is a, a little easier for us to handle in a budget. I have indicated on a number of occasions that having the, the revenue from the casino is, is a great opportunity for us, and a number of neighboring municipalities, after it was completed and they saw the first checks, wanted us to share the wealth. And again, we were the ones that put up our hand, but, but I think this is one of the organizations where it's an opportunity where we can give back some of that revenue to those organizations that serve us in Wasaga Beach. So I am supportive, but I would be supportive to take the $30,000 out of casino revenue for this requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Timms?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a couple of questions and a comment, and not meaning it to be a criticism, but on your presentation, could you update our logo? I know we're trying to get our logo out there, and I understand that with changes, it's hard to keep up to that. I'm curious, do you own the building you're currently in? I've been there, I know it as well, or is it a rental?
So we own the building, we don't own the land that it's situated on. It's, that land is Municipal Town of Collingwood land. Yep. So we are in, in the midst of a termination of lease of that land, so that when we do vacate that building, it'll be eventually taken over by the Town of Collingwood.
Thank you. May I continue, your worship? Yes, keep going.
Absolutely, keep going, counselor. I'll ring the bell when it's time.
I, I'm curious about your fundraising. I'm aware that one of our businesses had a fantastic golf tournament in the fall, Chuck's Roadhouse, in fact. And does that fundraising now go into the operating budget?
At this time, yes, and, and that's a great, another great example of where we've had support in your community. So that was contributed towards our annual operations. At this time, we do require raising about $1.2 million every year just to operate, to keep the lights on, to keep the pets fed. Our request today is, is more for future planning for this capital build.
My, my final question, and I, I'm sure that you have thought about this in, in every which way, but that's a large piece of property, and you currently own that property. Is it vitally important to the success of the new location that you maintain all of that property, or is there a portion there that could be sold and create a revenue to build?
That's a great question, and, and something we're giving thoughtful consideration, too. We currently have a site plan that, that maps out the entire five acres, and we're, we're thinking about future growth opportunities. We really want to ensure that we're not in a situation like this in the next 20 years, and so that we have, we have a bit, a little bit of wiggle room to work with. Not to mention, there are dog yards to consider, enrichment activities, and part of the landscape has been allocated for outdoor education. So in order for us to service 6,000 youth every single year, we have created features in the outdoor landscape so that they can work with animals under the sun.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Timms. Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you, your worship, through you. Great presentation. Congratulations, Sonya, on your recent new appointment. That's very exciting, and Mel, for your recent wedding. The table clearly supports what you guys do. It's, it's very admirable and invaluable work in, in regards to, especially the rescue and emergency side of your stuff, and I can also appreciate the education piece that you're wanting to provide as well. I have a couple of questions. One is, in this new facility, with some of the programming that you're looking to do, are you looking to assign fees for that as a revenue source for yourself in terms of your long-term sustainability?
Yeah, so within the business plan of this new facility, there's quite a few diverse revenue streams, some replicating what we already have, so things like our retail shop, the, the services that we offer. At the end of the day, our goal is always to make sure that pets and people are cared for, and so with things like an animal surrender, we might suggest or, or ask if, if someone is able to make a donation when they're surrendering their pet, but we always want to make sure those services are accessible. With our hospital, we're providing accessible and affordable services, so while there is some revenue generated there, there will always also be a need to fundraise and support our efforts in that way, but we do look to have a sustainable business model that won't require us to triple our fundraising efforts. When we triple our floor plan, we'd be able to integrate our existing social enterprise as well as some new opportunities in this building, including our canine center, which will help to sustain us long into the future.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that, I, if I recall correctly, when you were here before, Sonya, you were talking a lot about, you know, the people aspect of the facility and doing a lot of, almost like a, a community center, like it was, it was kind of morphing all over the place, right? Is that still your plan, or have you kind of thinned that out a little bit so that you stay more on point in terms of your original purpose?
Definitely staying true to who we are is, is absolutely. Definitely staying true to who we are is absolutely important, but we really recognize that compassion for pets is rooted in compassion for people. And so, a lot of our programming will be centered around ensuring that we can double the number of homeless animals that come to us. But we don't want to quadruple it. We want to ensure that we're proactively working with the community to keep pets with their families that love them and want to keep them. But during times of crisis, or housing insecurity, or food insecurity, might otherwise have to consider surrender. So, in those circumstances, that's when we're really, we still are going to be really focused on those programs that will help to keep pets with their people and arm and educate our youth into the future around responsible pet ownership, so that eventually, we're not putting ourselves out of business, so to speak, but we are changing our work from being very reactive to proactive.
Thank you, your worship. And that makes great sense, and there's so many organizations and services that are having to pivot like that at this point, you know, just in terms of not only the outcomes, but also, too, from that sustainability, financial sustainability factor. Curious, when you came last time, there was a specific ask, you know, sort of with the pitch. What sort of response have you had from the other municipalities from that initial ask?
You have a great memory, by the way. That was many months ago. We've had a great response. So, this is our fifth municipality that we've been in front of in the last couple of weeks. We have one more deputation next week in Blue Mountains. Everyone is in their budgeting phase, and we've had ongoing conversations with CAOs following these meetings that have been strong. We were fortunate to have our first commitment from the Town of Callingwood in 2023, and now they have put this forward for their 2024 budget deliberations. So, so far, I think the other positive feedback that we've been receiving is the way that we have set this up, and we did that in council with our municipal partners, so that it was an equitable ask that could be reasonably thoughtfully considered for next year's budget in the size that it results in after over 10 years.
Just one final one. Thank you, your worship. I would be fully supportive of the ask. My only hesitation is that, as we're seeing with our own infrastructure and projected construction costs and stuff, everything's just all over the place. So, my hesitation would be that this project gets deferred, and then what happens with that money? So, I would consider, I agree with Counselor Belanger, that this could easily come from the casino revenues, and that maybe we establish a reserve that we can assign the funds so that we're continuously contributing to it, and that they're ready when you're ready to come out of the ground, would be sort of my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Snell. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ladies, thank you again. Excellent presentation. Oh, no, no, I'm not done. Don't run yet. I guess the first question I have is, so you're on a leased piece of land now. You paid, raised funds, and paid to build the building. Are you receiving funds for that structure?
Yes. Yeah. Through an early lease termination with the Town of Callingwood. We're putting the final dots and cross Ts on the agreement right now. It'll go before council, but the amount has gone public, and that's $800,000.
Okay. And the building is what, eight years old, 10 years old?
Yeah. It was, it started and stopped. It originally opened its doors in, I would say, it's 2009, and then its kennels in 2011.
Okay. And how did you come to that value?
That was through a building facility assessment that was conducted by the Town of Callingwood and ongoing conversations over the year to land at that number.
How many square feet is it currently?
6,000. 6,200, maybe.
Have you reached out to Habitat for Humanity to assist with this build? I'm not saying they're going to build you a building, but Habitat for Humanity has a lot of great corporate citizens who work with them for great opportunities. And I'm not so sure that you couldn't reduce your costs somehow if you worked with someone like Habitat for Humanity, and if they could reach out to those, again, Gold Star community corporate leaders, I'll call them, that may be willing to come and help hammer a nail or paint or drywall or whatever. So, I would encourage you to do that before you finalize this. I think there may be an opportunity there. I can tell you that most people love their pets as much or more than they do family members. So, it's, I think, a good opportunity for you to look at. Did you ever give consideration to building a second location within the larger community as opposed to 6,000, or sorry, 16,000 square feet? Again, still in Callingwood, where people are having to travel from everywhere else to get there, as opposed to spreading that out? And I understand there'd be some logistics there and some added costs, but, you know, I think the closer it is to an individual, the more apt they are to use it. So, it's, you know, this came to me, this question came to me through a member of the public three days, two or three days ago, who's seen this on the agenda and said, why aren't they building one in Wasaga Beach, for example, as opposed to a larger one in Callingwood? Was there ever any consideration given to that? And if so, great. And if so, what was the, why the decision was made? And if not, why not?
Yeah. Yeah. One of our greatest challenges, without a doubt, is our large geographic, excuse me, area that we serve. When we first started looking at a new home, we put out a press release to the community saying that we were looking for five acres of land, and really kind of feeling out, we were open to any of the municipalities within the region that we serve to set up our, to stabilize what I'll call our first location, and then consider satellites moving forward. So, the location that we currently have on Sanford Fleming Drive is the result of response that we had to that press release. And at the time, commercial real estate being what it was, there wasn't too many options that we were aware of to look at. We definitely recognize that in order to meet those that are most vulnerable in our community, the closer we are, it means the more effective we're going to be as a charity. And so, to that end, we do have what we call our access to care team, and they are really working to ensure that when we set up our vaccine clinics, our microchip clinics, our spay and neuter services, that we're finding unique and novel ways to be present there onsite. And an example of that would be that on November 4th and 5th, we were over at Soggy and Shores, and we did a two-day onsite wellness clinic, providing vaccines and microchips to over 100 pets in that community. So, that really is, I think, no matter where we are physically located, there's going to be a recognition that transportation is going to be a limitation to those that we need to serve. And so, those outreach clinics, those access to care clinics are going to be part of our strategic plan moving forward, will continue to be with locations, definitely in Wasaga Beach. But long-term, I think, we knew that in our facility that we are at right now on 10th Line, we couldn't stay there. It, first of all, was not on land that we owned, but parking, we had eight parking spots there. And so, the limitations that we had on that existing facility couldn't be ignored. We needed to stabilize homes, so to speak, and then look at and talk to our municipal partners about what satellite opportunities could look like. Because not only are we geographically, when we look to the east of us, Wasaga Beach Clearview, there's some stretches there that we need to address, but you can only imagine out to the west of us, when we're looking at Gray Highlands and Meaford, some of those pet owners might be looking at an hour and a half drive. So, some work to be done, for sure.
All right. Thank you. 16 million.
Yeah.
Do we? Do we know that that's enough? Is it going to be enough by the time you get there? Have you considered that?
Yeah.
And I ask that question, ladies, because I'd hate to see you have to go back to communities now in a year or two or three from now and ask for more. I think that's going to be a tough ask, because it's tough times for everybody. I applaud you in going back and rethinking how you asked this question. As a Poem in for Wasaga Beach, it was 200, now it's 300. So, pretty smooth, you know, 66% increase. You just brought that in there. So, good on you. But over 10 years, of course, makes it a lot gentler and easier for us to support. And I want to be clear, I will support this as well. But my concern is, when you're ready to build in this particular climate, financial climate, is this enough? Have you really thought that out? Because I'd hate for you to have to come back.
Yeah. Something that our building committee and board are giving very serious consideration, too. We have most recently been going through our Class B cost estimate, and you're not wrong. Escalation and the cost of labor, the cost of supplies are something that is making this not the ideal environment to be building a charitable building of this size. But what we know is that these, the predictions are, these costs are not going to go away with what's happening in our environment, with forest fires, with different economic pressures that we are seeing in our communities. All focuses will be on working to the very best of our ability to get shovel in the ground as soon as possible and open the doors for this new building, as well as working to make the most efficient and economical building that we can build. And that entails multiple rounds of value engineering, where we might have won, at one point, wanted floor drains in this room, and now, you know, those could be phased-in approaches for us to look at. So, what do we absolutely need to open the doors, and what can we be looking at down the road once perhaps prices have softened, or, you know, we've been up and running for a good number of years? So, a lot of work has been happening behind the scenes to that end.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions or comments, ladies, have a great day.
Thank you. Good to go. Thanks.
All right. We do have a recommendation, the Joint Committee of the whole of council received the presentation, presentation for the Georgian Triangle Humane Society partnering to their new regional center for Pets and People for Information, and that a report be brought back to, from staff on the funding request. That's in addition to that, correct? Do we need a mover and a seconder to do an amendment to that, Madam Clerk?
No, the motion's not with council at this time, so we can just have a mover and seconder as read.
All right. You've heard the question. A mover and a seconder, Deputy Mayor Snell and Counselor Delaio? Sorry, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies. All right. Now, of course, still in delegations. We now have no more presentations or delegations. Moving on to item number seven, the open forum. This is an opportunity where people here today or online can ask questions about items on today's agenda. Madam Deputy Clerk, anyone online?
Thank you, your worship. I have nobody online, but I do have one registered in the audience today.
All right. That individual would like to come forward and speak?
Mr. Kareem Thomas and Ms. Pina Stilletano.
All right. Pina and Kareem, welcome. Why do I feel we're going to talk about hockey here? Or lasagna, one or the other. The floor is yours.
It will be about hockey. Good morning, mayor and council. So, we're just here basically, like the mayor said, to talk about hockey. We know that there is going to be the amendment for the facility allocation policy and the refund policy coming this afternoon. So, we just had a couple of questions that we'd like, questions and concerns that we'd like you guys to consider. We've done some background work, so I didn't really come too prepared, but I will present. So, the first one is the refund policy. So, the ICE cancellation policy in its entirety, right now, we're at a 30-day policy, and that's what's being presented to you. It also indicated that they did their background work in the sense of other municipalities and cities in the area, and that's the going policy, and it is not. So, the surrounding areas like Callingwood and the city of Barry have different policies, which I think you should take into consideration when you're an organization of our size or even smaller. You're putting programs together, and you need time to sell them. And if you don't sell them for whatever reason, there should be a way that you book this ICE and then know that you're not going to be out the entirety of your monies. So, with the proposal right now, it's 30 days. That doesn't give you much time to cancel a program if it doesn't go off for whatever reason. Other cities and towns are doing 29 days. You get 50%. Seven days. Anything within seven days is no refund. So, I think you guys should look at revisiting that policy so that you're giving organizations a little bit more to give, because people like us, if we only have 30 days, we will take our ICE somewhere else, where we know that our money is a little safer, and we can get some of that back should our program not work for us. So, that's the first one. The second one, we believe that you guys should put in some sort of policy regarding tournaments. So, for example, the city of Barry has a policy that they look at tournament organizers as one of their highest hierarchies because of the financial impact it has to their community. So, they look at those organizers and give them priority over ICE because they're booked years in advance, so they know that they could carry those years or those dates following year after year. So, for example, we host Fun in the Sun in August. We know that year after year, we take the last weekend in August. So, we're just hoping that maybe council and staff will look at that and put that also into their policy, because right now, it's currently not there.
So, with the tournament aspect, so as we now have this new twin pad arena, we look at this policy that's coming forward that's only narrow-minded to certain groups and certain things that impact the arena at a smaller scale than a bigger scale. So, we looked at Barry, for example. They host many tournaments and many different things. They open that to, that open that group and category as a high priority to the city because of the impact, the financial impact to the community and the impact to the city of brand recognition and many things like that. So, not only does a tournament bring kids and parents, they bring places of people to stay and accommodations that we now are applying for to get in our town. But with the policy coming forward, only gives us small mind of what we could do with this facility, with this building, not looking in the future at things like, for example, ourselves. We did a lot of research in this process and this plan, and we figured out after our year that we are third most rental in this new arena, or the arena that just passed. So, we're saying that we bring a huge impact to the community, and with this new policy, it doesn't give us the opportunity to do a bigger impact in our community and sell more ICE and do more things. It kind of puts us in a small category or even sixth in priority in coming to this new arena. So, it doesn't give us an opportunity to grow, to bring more of an impact to our community. And for example, Barry has seen that as a huge revenue and a huge impact to the committee. So, they've gravitated in that and worked with the conveners that host these things to make them home in their arena, so they could provide and negotiate and talk to them and have an open mind of what they could bring to the community more than minor sports or education, right? Like, we did a lot of research in this, and we looked at Barry's example, because Barry is a big city, and they've been doing, they have many arenas that they've only exclusivized to organizations, because they see the impact that they bring to them and allow it to be open. So, that's why tournaments and groups that are big, that bring big revenue streams to our community should be involved in these conversations through allocations of ICE and many different things like that.
So, I want to emphasize first, we're not only speaking about what we do. There's lots of people that do what we do in this community, just a lot of them don't come forward. So, the allocation and the policies hurt a lot of small businesses that are trying to run events and tournaments and programs through our new arena. So, that's why we're bringing it forward, because I think we need to look at it at a bigger scale and not just what we've done in the past with minor hockey, minor sports. So, the next concern would be the hierarchy. You'll see in your report that there's six categories. Our business is at the bottom. But if you look at the scale of the amount of money and the hours that we spend in the new arena and the old arena, it doesn't make sense, because I think they're not looking at, just because we're not the educational or we're not minor hockey, that we should be put at the bottom. And I think we should then maybe put in a different section, saying the profit organizations may have priority to this circumstance, or to this one, or to this one, rather than just saying they're at the bottom and they have to wait, right? Because we do make money. I think it should be looked at, how much money are they spending in this new arena that needs to be paid for, rather than just because of who they are and what they do in the community? So, that's another aspect. And then, we also believe that they're looking to have it at a five-year review. We firmly believe that as the times are changing and the arena is new and it's growing, things will change. More programs will come in, more investors will come in to wanting to rent the ICE. We believe it should be a two-year review. So, once you have the arena up and running... So once you have the arena up and running and you go through all the kinks and all the new people will come, maybe some will go, in two years, you'll be able to put a finalized five-year policy in place. Because if you do it for five years, then you lock new people, because we were in this circumstance five years ago, you lock new people and you limit them to what they can do because the policy won't allow them to do anything more. So it's something to look at because if you're new, the arena is new, the policy will be new. You could iron out all the things that need to be fixed and then revisit, like revisit it in two years and then make a more sound decision for a five-year policy rather than doing it such a short term. Because I think you'll, you'll hurt a lot of people trying to do business and trying to build programs here if they're not able to do it because the policy is for five years and it doesn't change. And if, for it to come back to council will probably be unlikely.
Okay, so we, we usually have a two-minute limit here. Do you have anything, one, one last thing before we move on?
Nope, we're good.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay. So questions or comments from any members of council? Madam Clerk, are we procedurally good to do that?
You can ask questions.
All right, thank you very much. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, Chris, did you want to speak to any of their points before questions or are you good?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Snell, through to the mayor. I would make one comment. There's certainly a plethora of ideas that have come up and obviously the two common individuals have studied and are invested in our policy and its impacts. The one message I would give to council, and I know you've heard it in a recent discussion in budget, the good news is today that we are budgeted to sell likely half of all of the ice that we have in the new twin pad arena in 2024. And I would rest assured to the people making comments today that we are not certainly at the threshold at this point, and I think that that is a good news story, that this allocation policy is truly a tool to ensure that if there's a conflict on any one day, we have something to revert to that's predictable for all involved, both the, the minor sport groups or the, the for-profit organizations. But ultimately, I think that it's important to understand that the impact of these refund and allocation policies are only intended to try and push our arena out to bookings that could be 90 or 100% one day. And I think that our investigation, as outlined in the report, into comparables in, in our region across Ontario, in fact, we went down into the GTA, is a progressive step to try and sell as much ice as possible.
All right, thank you, Chris. Counselor Tims?
Thank you, Your Worship. I wasn't quite clear on the first point that our deputants made. Can I ask for clarification regarding the 30 days? Could you clarify that for me because I, I kind of missed it?
So right now, the policy stands that if you cancel within 30 days, it's not refundable. So if we were to book ice and then cancel our ice within the 30-day period, we don't get a refund. Surrounding areas, and I have emails from the town of Collingwood and the city of Barry, they have a three-tier. So if you book, you cancel at 30 days, full refund, you cancel in the 21-day period, you get 50%. You cancel at the seven-day period, then there's another, this is the city of Barry, there's a 25%. City of Collingwood, you could actually cancel with a 15-day fee, a $15 fee. So you're not restricting people to be scared to book ice and then lose money because their program doesn't work. And I'm talking from a program perspective, not from an individual renting ice. We're talking about people that are trying to run programs. There's three of us that we know here in town. So you're kind of limiting people because they get scared when you're investing $1,000 for a three-day program or $2,000 and then your program doesn't work for whatever the reason. Now you're like, now I'm going to be out of that money rather than knowing you can cancel at 14 days because you didn't get your, your numbers, you could at least get some of your money back. The city of Barry also says that they will allocate that money to something else. So they may not refund you as a whole, as monies, but they'll take that money and allocate it to a different ice that you would like to book with them. So those municipalities are looking at working with people like us rather than saying, okay, at 30 days, if you've canceled within your 30-day policy then, or your 30-day ice allocation, then you've lost your money. So I'm saying revisit that because it gives people a little bit more incentive to want a book in your double pad arena rather than taking it somewhere else where their money's secure.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, as a follow-up, I think some of the points you made are really thought-provoking and I appreciate that. From an economic impact, I think that you're dead on that these tournaments and activities and programs in the community do make a large impact and perhaps no different than how we welcome third-party events to our beachfront, et cetera. So I think we have to always have a little bit of a look at the economic impact, which may be a little more long-range as, as events and tournaments and, and programming grows. And I also thought that the two-year review suggestion is, is something that perhaps is worth looking at because of the newness of all of these pieces. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ego?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. Thank you for going over that 30-day policy. It really had to get into our heads how that works. I was going to ask here, when you, so just walk us through booking a tournament. Number one, is all your summer ice or do you book in the winter as well?
So, so for tournaments, how we book our tournaments? So we first started in COVID. It was you, you booked the ice and then you, you book amount of ice to the amount of games you could host. So for example, the, the old arena, we did about 34 hours of ice rented to produce all the games. So we have to book that ahead of time. Sometimes you have teams coming in all the way until the last week if you have a time slot or whatever open to provide a team to, to be in the tournament. Within 30 days, you don't know how your tournament's going to go yea or nay. You might have, for example, this year, we had four different categories until, let's say, the last two weeks, we had one team or two teams that we needed a spot to fill. I'm not going to cancel a whole entire tournament because I'm missing one team or so. You figure it out what you could do to get that team in there, offering at a discounted price or whatever you need to do to provide a team filling that slot so you could use your whole schedule. So that's how we come together our tournaments and, for example, we do it a year in advance. So two years ago, there was the legacy bylaw and that legacy bylaw that was provided by council at that time gave anybody that booked ice the year before from 2019 able to get that same ice the next year. With this new policy, it changes that, meaning that I cannot sell my tournament for next year now because I don't know if my ice is guaranteed or not. Because now the legacy bylaw will be null and void after this policy is completed and I have to work or gamble or pay in advance $6,000 for the tournament before a month to make sure that I get that time slot again. It does, so I go back in the cycle and start all over on how we book tournaments and host tournaments.
Thanks. You may have said it. So let's say you're booking a tournament for, you know, let's just say March. When do you put a deposit on that tournament? Like what's the timeframe for this?
As soon as we book it. So as soon as we book the ice, if it's, so if I'm hosting a tournament in March and I know in advance I could pay, it should be paid as soon as we book it. So I don't get, so us, we have to have that, that funds in hand and whatever amount of ice we're going to assume we're going to use. So it's a gamble that we just host a tournament and say, we're going to use 30 hours or we're going to use whatever hours. We don't know this until you get the teams in, so we have to pay in advance to host the tournament. Does that make sense?
I think so. So you pay the full amount?
Correct.
When you book it. That's what I just want to be sure on.
Correct.
Counselor Balaji?
Thank you, through the mayor. I think-
Sure, sure, Counselor. My apologies. Chris, did you have something you wanted to speak to?
Certainly. Thank you, Your Worship. Further to Counselor Ego's question, I would clarify that under the policy that is proposed today, that there is a request period roughly 45 days prior. So if it was a March tournament, but to use the exact example, under today's policy that we are considering later on in council, the proposed, or the request for that ice would come in on November 15th for a four-month period that includes March, January to April. The payment date for that request would be 30 days prior to March 1st. If that block, let's call it 34 hours of ice is required, very specific as per today's policy that we are reviewing, the payment for that 34 hours would be on February 1st. That is the due date. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was understanding that.
All right, sure, Counselor. Balaji, go ahead.
Through the mayor. I, I think you bring up some very good points and, you know, I read the new policy a couple of days ago, but obviously when, when we get a cancellation, we have an opportunity to rent that ice for whether it be 30 days or two weeks or whatever. So under the current policy, if we get a cancellation and the organizer loses their, their money, if we're able to rent any portion of that, how does that work under the new policy? Is that a-
Go ahead, Chris.
Certainly, Counselor Balaji, through the chair. Under the revised policy, there is a second tier which gives the people who owned the ice, who wanted to cancel, an opportunity to receive a credit back if the ice can be sold. Certainly, there are two sides and, and it is intimidating to lay out your money if you're still finalizing how many hours you need. And I fully understand and sympathize how tournaments are operated. In the same sense, we need to recognize that the town blocks that ice and holds it because we have a paying customer waiting. And it, at the moment that they decide that they don't need it anymore, we try to sell it again. And I think that the refund policy has to meet somewhere in the middle and this 30-day number was an attempt to try and make it as clear as possible. So, so a refund with a credit is viable as a second tier. I think that's the very specific to your question. If it's after 30 days and we can sell the hour that was canceled, a credit goes to the people who would be able to use it to rent another hour some other time.
Just to follow up, thank you for that clarification, but the point about the hierarchy of how we prioritize the rental, I think, I think there is merit to looking at, you know, track record and how much an organization is, is spending and that, you know, that maybe the, being last in the priority list is, the current measure may be something that we have to look at, a more of a blended look between what's viewed as a priority based on what the organization is doing and then what they've actually, their track record in renting ice or their potential track record to increase their ice rentals going forward. So I would support looking at that, but I think if, on the 30 days, if the organizer and the town are both working to re-rent that ice after a cancellation, I think if they are getting the credit, then that certainly sounds reasonable to me given the, the huge investment we have in the facility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? All right, this, this item, obviously, there's, there's a lot of discussion here and it is coming up later on in the agenda and I don't believe it's been pulled. So I think we need to pull this and have some further conversation. Do we need a motion for that or just, just a notice that we're going to, we're going to pull it?
Thank you, Your Worship. We will just note that on the agenda and ensure that is pulled for further discussion and debate.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I will just make note that I understand fully your concerns, Pina and Kareem. I, I hope that you can also understand though that we have a $60 million arena that we need to pay for. And so we, I perfectly agree that we've got to find somewhere in the middle that everybody can be happy, although I am a politician, so I know you can never make everybody happy. But having said that, we hear you. We hear you loud and clear. I think staff are hearing you and we are going to pull this later on for some further discussion. So we'll see what happens from there. Did you want to add something, Kareem?
I have a closing comment. So my only closing comment is in, in the category for first priorities in the town contract, there's only mention of the junior, junior hockey team. There's more opportunities to bring other things here up and beyond a junior hockey team, a senior hockey team. Huge tournament organizers bring in the same revenue aspect as a junior hockey team, if not more. And I think it's only categories as one trick to do only junior team, but the hockey world is huge and there's more than junior hockey that could bring a revenue stream to our community. Tournaments, senior hockey, there's a wide variety of things. There's a person that mentioned the outlaw league. The outlaw league is a league, is Ontario Rep Hockey League, and the only reason what makes them outlaw is that they do not go under the governing body of Hockey Canada. And there's a lot of story about Hockey Canada, a lot of issues, but that's something otherwise. But parents have grown to the fact that hockey is more than just governed by one component. It's governed by multiple things that kids can want to play. They don't have to be governed under one umbrella. They can be governed under many things and still have the same impact and still rent the ice. We all understand $60 million. We want to be part, a positive part of helping bring down that debt by renting a lot of ice, which we've proven over the couple of years. And that's my closing comment.
Good, we got you. I'll just, I'll just make note that I have allowed this conversation to go longer than, than normal, but the reason I've done that is I think that this is, I keep saying it, I know over and over, we have a $60 million building that we need to pay for. And so this is an important conversation and it's why we'll pull it again later, but I think it's important to be clear why we've allowed this to go on as long as we have. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon or morning. All right. We now will move on to government relations, 8.1. We have a verbal update regarding the twin pad arena and I will open the floor to our CIO, Mr. McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I will try and keep this brief because we've been talking a lot about hockey. We're all excited about it. Just simply wanted to advise council that MJMA released a substantial performance certificate last week on November 8th. The implication of that is that the new building will transfer to the town of Wasaga Beach on November 18th, which is this Saturday. So that is an important milestone. It's exceptionally positive news. We're excited about it. We're excited to get in there. I know both Chris and Pam are diligently working on their, their transition plans to see library services move, move over into the new arena library. And Director Reese is also looking at transition plans for, for hockey moving into the new facility. So won't go into much detail, I just wanted to share that that milestone has been met and as of next week, we'll, we'll have the ability to get into the new building.
All right, thank you, Mr. CEO. Questions or comments? Counselor White?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to the CEO. It's great news to hear that the arena is going to be, the T-PAL is going to be handed over on the 18th, but that's a substantial, that's a performance report, not a completion report. I wouldn't want the public to think that this thing's done because it's nowhere near done, correct?
Correct, through you, Mr. Mayor. Substantial performance means that all of the safety standards have been met so that the building can be occupied. There still are some outstanding construction issues. It's below a certain threshold of dollars. So there will be construction workers in the building for the next few weeks, potentially for a couple of months, putting last pieces of trim on door casings, that kind of thing. So the building is not 100% complete. This is very normal, a normal thing that every major civic facility goes through. Once you are at this certain threshold, you actually do have to issue this. So our consultants have let us know that that threshold was actually met some time ago, so they felt that we needed to issue that and the town move in there. But you are absolutely right, there is still some fine tuning left to, to be undertaken and that will continue for the next little while, but we're hoping that that is done quickly.
All right, any other questions or comments? But do, I want to be, for the public's sake, we, we do not have occupancy yet though, correct?
Your Worship, that is correct.
So to be clear for the public, we, although we'll be taking possession of this, it will be our building on the 18th. It doesn't mean that we can open the doors to the public or even to all staff at that point. We still have to do a, the building department has to do a thorough inspection and make sure that it meets the requirements. sure that it meets the requirements for occupancy and then we still have after that a month or two or whatever of final touches. So we could be in December, we could be in January, but we're getting close. We're not there yet. Is that correct, Mr. Director?
Yes, that is correct, your worship. And just to give you a little bit of an idea what that process looks like for us, the entire consulting team, that's every engineer involved in the project that has responsibility for a major component of the design, as well as the architect, have to request, first of all, they have to provide to us final letters stating that the work is a hundred percent complete and whatever discipline that is, whether it be mechanical, structural, civil works, you know, meet the design, meet the intent of the code and will perform over the course of time. So we have a package that we are reviewing with those letters in it, but, so, you know, it's kind of a two-tiered thing that we need the consulting team to sign off on the building. We do our due diligence after that and when we're satisfied that all of the requirements outlined in the code are met, we would then issue the occupancy.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Any other questions or comments? See, none. Okay, it is eight minutes to twelve. I think at this point, Madam Clerk, we'll take a lunch break and we'll say thirty minutes, so we'll say thirty-eight minutes to make it simple, so let's be back at twelve-thirty. All right, we'll take a break until twelve-thirty. Thank you.
And we're live, your worship.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Clerk, and we'll now continue on with our meeting. We're now at the consent list item number nine, and I will pass the floor for Community Services over to Counselor DeLeo. Counselor DeLeo?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I will now review the Community Services Business Unit of Committee of the Hall. All items listed below will be approved by one resolution. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests it, in which case the item will be removed from the consent list and considered under the appropriate business unit. Moving forward, I will, 9.1.1 is the Fire Department Monthly Report. We now have Fire Chief Williams to speak to that report.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair DeLeo, members of council. Within your agenda package is the October Monthly Fire Department Update. October included 166 calls for service, including four fires, five motor vehicle collisions, 24 fire alarm activations, 10 requests for assistance, nine public hazards and rescues, and 114 medical calls. We also completed 46 inspections, 42 hours of community outreach programming, as well as our routine training. And in addition to those items, 12 of our full-time firefighters participated in an advanced elevator rescue training. This is the second time our department's been able to undertake that training, and it's very important for a community such as ours that's growing, and we're seeing more and more buildings with elevators. The first week of November included Carbon Monoxide Awareness Week. During this week, we responded to a call that gave us a great reminder of the importance of the dangers of carbon monoxide. A local care and treatment facility contacted 911 after their alarms began beeping, and upon arrival, firefighters immediately had indications of carbon monoxide within the building on our gas monitors. They ventilated the structure and were quickly able to isolate the issue to being a exhaust pipe off the back of their hot water tank. The appliance was now causing carbon monoxide to fill the basement of the facility, and fortunately the facility had working carbon monoxide alarms, which alerted staff and resulted in no injuries. If this event had occurred prior to 2014, when the province had the law in place for carbon monoxide alarms, the outcome may have been very different. Carbon monoxide, it's a colorless, odorless gas that's produced by incomplete combustion of fuels such as gas, oil, or wood, and it's often called the silent killer because it's very difficult to detect without specialized equipment. Common sources can include furnace, hot water tanks, stoves, fireplaces, vehicles, barbecues, and generators, and symptoms include headache, dizziness, nausea, confusion, and can lead to unconsciousness and even death. One of the real challenges with carbon monoxide poisoning is that a lot of these symptoms can mimic a common cold or flu. So Ontario now requires homes with fuel burning appliances and attached garage to have working carbon monoxide alarms located on each level of the house wherever someone is sleeping, and the alarm should be tested monthly, batteries replaced annually, and the entire unit every 10 years. So final reminder is if you're at home and your carbon monoxide alarm rings, please evacuate the building and contact 911. Do not enter until it's deemed safe to do so. And if you have any questions or if there's a community member that requires assistance obtaining an alarm due to a financial challenge, please contact the fire department, and we'll be happy to help you out. Thank you very much. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Any questions or comments? Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Chief, I'm looking at the report again, and 10 public assists of other agencies, can you just touch on that? And then the one below it as well, fire alarms activated, no emergency. Twenty.
Thank you through the chair to your worship. So the number 10 there, it's for public service calls or assistance to other agencies, so it can cover a wide variety of items. It could be a public service call for, just an example, could be an elderly individual that has an issue with their home, they don't know how to resolve it, maybe a water leak in their house, and they've called the fire department to assist with turning off that water supply. Assisting other agencies are usually specific requests from either the OPP or County of Simcoe paramedics. Could also be Wasaga Distribution that they're wanting to use a piece of equipment or staff. And then fire alarms activated with no emergencies, there was 20 of them within the month. That means that we received a call from a monitoring company that a fire alarm had activated within a residence or a business. We responded and ultimately determined there was no fire condition. So this would likely be the cause of a false alarm, such as a cooking incident, or it could also be an equipment deficiency that caused the actual alarm system itself to act up even though there wasn't an emergency.
So if I may, Madam Chair, it's interesting to know then that, you know, our firefighters, our fire department, they're doing more services than most people know about. To the chief's point, there might be a senior who has a flood happening and doesn't or can't shut that water supply off, although most people say, well, you should call a plumber. The fire department's there to assist those people who need it. So again, I thought that was interesting, and again, interesting for the public to be aware that, you know, they don't just fight fires and go to accidents. There's a whole lot more encompassing. Thank you.
Counselor Timms?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say I was quite alarmed when I saw that our department was assisting Collingwood in the tire guy's fire. That looked like quite a dangerous one, and our department was handling it from the elevated trucks while the Collingwood was fighting it on the ground. Was that a challenge to put out?
Thank you, Counselor Timms, through the chair. Actually, the fire was brought under control relatively quickly, within about 45 minutes, and the fire that I'm aware of involved two tractor trailers that were storing a few hundred tires. So I think this is an example of, you know, the right equipment makes the job easy. Collingwood has an aerial device, we have an aerial device, and using that equipment can put our firefighters in safer positions to be able to fight these fires. And it's also an example of the great mutual aid system that we have here in Simcoe County and most of the province as well, actually, where if your community doesn't have adequate resources to deal with an emergency, your neighbor is, you know, just around the corner. And through our dispatch center, these processes are automatic, so the deputy chief in Collingwood simply asks dispatch, we need help from Wasaga Beach, and literally within seconds, our tones are ringing off, and we had a truck at the door in two minutes. So we help out our neighbors, and we obviously enjoy the same benefit from them in return when needed. You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Timms. Counselor White?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the chief. Sorry, who got dispatched to that call first? Was that Collingwood first?
So in actuality, I believe the first calls came across within Wasaga Beach, and that is because they were made by cellphone, and the closest tower was in Wasaga Beach. So the initial call popped up on our screen, but was very quickly realized by the dispatch center that it is a Collingwood address. So there, they received the first call out for trucks to respond, and I'm not sure if it was while they were en route and they could see on the horizon what they were coming up against, or as soon as they arrived on scene, they made a request for mutual aid assistance, and that's the moment in time we would get the call and then respond.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? I'd like to add just a comment, just on the carbon monoxide detectors. About 25 years ago, I had an experience that I'd like to share. One of my detectors kept on going off, but it wasn't giving me a reading. So we replaced it, and the second time, it also went off. And again, there was no reading to it, which I couldn't understand. So all of a sudden, my plants were turning yellow. And then my old English sheepdog started throwing up, and that's when I knew something is wrong. I called the fire department, and sure enough, they go to my furnace, and that radar went, so they took the door off my furnace, and I had to get the gas man, so they red-coated. And we had to leave the house, they had to vent it. So little things like that, like not to ignore, because it could have been deadly. Okay, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. I will now pass the motion that the Joint Committee of the Hall and Council receive the report titled Fire Department Monthly Report, October 2023, for information. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Fay, seconded by Counselor Brelanger, all in favor, passed unanimously. I am aware that the following items, 9.1.3 and 9.1.2, have been pulled from the consent agenda for separate consideration and vote. I will now pass the motion. Result that the Community Services Section of Committee of the Hall hereby receive the November 16, 2023 Consent List Item 9.1, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Snell and seconded by Counselor Timms. I will now move to the first item, all in favor, passed unanimously. I will now move to the first item pulled, which is item 9.1.3, pulled by Counselor Brelanger. I will now pass the floor to Counselor Brelanger.
Thank you, through the chair. I just wanted to make a comment, and then through some discussion, I think some other people want to comment, but the reason I pulled this item is in the minutes, they were referring to the purchase of some tote bags for the seniors' expo, and talking about possibly being logoed. And I pulled it because there was no mention as to trying to have any sponsorship or having logos on the reverse side from certain suppliers or whatever to offset those costs. So my comment was just basically in general, for any committee, whenever we're taking on a cost, if there's a sponsorship opportunity to underwrite those costs to the municipality, we should, that should be a consideration. I think there are probably a few other comments, though, on this.
Thank you, Counselor Brelanger. Counselor Ego?
Thank you, and through you the chair. Yes, thank you. Our eagle-eyed counselor here had picked that up on the age-friendly. Why I'm speaking to it is because I'm the council rep on the age-friendly community, and earlier in the day today here, the chair was here, and so was our town representative, Angela, who's the adult services coordinator with the town. So I guess it's a good time to speak to learning about committees, and that our committee happens to really work well together. We discuss a lot of things, and the tote bags came up. And anyway, and today I have learned, and because everyone on the committee was new to this. The chair had just come in late last term. So long story short, there'll be no money basically spent, or not any big amount, on tote bags. We've learned that the town, of course, does have tote bags, that the age-friendly, that they in turn donate to the age-friendly for their expo. So then we can take that bag and use it and thank the town very much, and then their logo, the town's logo is on the bag. And so the chair was here today, very happy I was able to send him that message first thing this morning when I came in. So he came here to see how council works. So there we are, we're all learning. Thank you.
Counselor Ego, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. I will now pass the motion that the Joint Committee of the Hall and Council receives the Age Friendly Advisory Committee minutes of September 12, 2023, for information. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor White and seconded by Mayor Smith, all in favor? Passed unanimously. I will now move to the next pulled item, which is 9.1.2, pulled by Mayor Smith, and I will now pass the chair to Mayor Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just, I pulled this item just to basically make comments and with respect to the facilities and allocations refund policy, and then to have further conversation carried on from this morning with the folks that were here, Pean and Cream, speaking to this. So I thought it would be, there was quite a bit of conversation on that, and I thought it would be good to open the floor here again to have some further conversation, because this is, these are, this is an important item, and I think we need to get it right. And so here we are. So I would just, I did ask Director Roos to provide us with any other information he may have, and I don't know whether he's, if he's come up with anything or not, but maybe Director Roos could speak.
Certainly, through the chair. Thank you, Mayor Smith. I do have a bit of an introduction to these two policies organized, and I hope that there are further questions beyond the discussions we've already had today. I think I'll start with the point that I made earlier. The good news is that we have ice, we have double the ice available now in January. If council wasn't aware, we take the keys on Friday afternoon, and on Saturday morning, we're going to start building ice. So you can imagine that staff are trying to make sure that we're as ready as possible when the opening day comes. At any rate, if I could summarize the changes that are before council today regarding the allocation policy first, I want everyone to understand, I know that we've had these back and forth a number of times in council over the past year or so, but the most notable change is that until this policy is to be adopted, we have always given out our ice based on a legacy format. And this term legacy, I think, is a good word to use. It's known to our users as well. And to clarify for everyone listening, if you owned ice on a certain day and time last year, or booked a room, or booked a playing field, our town would always give you first right of refusal on the following year. So March break was given to the same occupant from last year, provided they remain in good standing, to use the same facility again the following March break. We've looked out to comparables around Ontario, they're listed in the report, and there is a common place that is a little bit different than that legacy approach that we had, and we are proposing that council adopt a priority hierarchy in order to give out our fields, rooms, and ice moving forward. And that is the gist of this allocation policy. It has been updated with clearer definitions so that we can clearly understand what the different groups are who are sold ice, and truly, it has not been area of great concern. For the most part, even at our old single pad arena, we have been able to satisfy the bulk of ice booking requests. Maybe people weren't looking at us because this legacy thing just kind of held the bulk of the returning bookings, but I am confident that nine times out of 10, if there are two groups that are after the same hour, the worst case is likely one goes a little later than they hoped, or maybe on Thursdays instead of Tuesdays. But we're usually able to come up with a solution. You may remember earlier this year, we heard from St. Pat's, a not-for-profit group that ran a pickup league in the summertime. We were able to satisfy that request that they were deputizing to council to have you understand. At any rate, I want everyone to understand that the only other process that I guess has significant impact to our users is that with this priority sequence, that we will look at all of the requests. It's not 100% guaranteed until the ice has been booked in a four-month period. So in the past, I suppose you could depend on that, and we have written into our policy a requirement that in the event of a dispute, we will first look at historical, to try and evaluate. So for example, if there was a March break booking, and you submitted your request, we went through the hierarchy booking, and someone was bumped out of their March break period, we would only do that, provided they both came in at the same level of priority, if the one didn't have a historical. So you wouldn't necessarily be bumped. If you were running a private hockey camp during March break, and a second outfit showed up, and they wanted to run a private, they would both be in the for-profit group, and we would look then to dispute or resolution, which is a section of this policy, and that would trump the new group, and the person who came in good standing and was already running a reasonable hockey camp would be able to continue. So I think that dispute resolution is an important part of our new priority hierarchy. The next big steps that certainly came up earlier are regarding the refund policy, and payments, I might add, have now been clearly defined in our policy if we approve it today. All of those legacy bookings didn't have clearly defined payment requirements in the town of Wasaga Beach's policy. Today, we will. If you make an application, you're given such and such a booking time through our new priority hierarchy process. hierarchy process, there is a requirement for when you make your payment. But in the past, if you had March break, sometimes we as staff would be chasing the user group to pay, it, it did happen after March break and we didn't really have any specific policy to refer to. And I think that's an important consideration for council to understand, that this will allow us in a fair and transparent way to draw a line and say, hey, thirty days out from the month that you haven't paid yet, everything will be revoked and we're going to sell it again because you haven't given us payment. And, and that is a, a good way of doing business and I think that we are progressing in the right direction by adding this to our policy, our refund policy. Last but not least, I wanted to speak a little bit about how refunding works. I did look into cancellation policies quickly and I'm, I'm not in dispute with anyone, but I, I have a, a, a good comparables chart that the, the staff have put together. We have reviewed this with the CSG as well. It justifies some of the revisions that we're building into our policies today, but it also looked at communities like Callingwood and Berry and those cancellation policies would in fact have requirements very much like ours. So I know that there was a bit of discussion, but I intend to forward those policies to councilors if they would like to review it specifically, but our terms that require thirty days prior and, and we do have a second refund level. So at thirty days, if I say, I can't use my ice, then we're saying, uh-oh, you've already paid for it, but if we are allowed to sell it, or if we are able to sell it, you will get a full credit. A very similar situation does exist in both Callingwood and in Berry and our comparables chart shows that a more strenuous refund policy is in fact the norm in a number of comparables. And I can forward out that chart to council at the conclusion of this meeting. At any rate, last but not least, I would invite questions from council. I do think that the policies are well done. I know that it's a complex process that we have to go through because there's a variety of different user groups that come to the town, but I am confident that staff have built policies that will help us maximize our revenues with all of our booking processes.
Thank you, Director Roos. Any other questions? Counselor White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Chris. Thank you for that. Can you just walk me through a timeline of how payments and refunds would work if I give you an example? Lee is the example, as mentioned earlier. If I wanted to book the first week of March for ice time, can you tell me when I would have to book that, when I would have to pay it? And we already know the refund policy. So it's just like, I guess there was a difference of, do you pay for the ice time when you book it or do you pay it at some other point in that timeline?
So there are two scenarios of payment. The first one is if you apply for the block of, of ice prior to the four-month season. So this is where we have set a date, there's a small chart on page three of the policy that talks about what the seasons are and therefore what the deadlines are. But to generalize, if you're certain that you need something out into the future, we set a timeline of forty-five days prior to that season. You will submit your request, the town will put it through the filter, will develop an invoice that says you're going to get these dates and it comes at this cost. And the organization or the user group that made that application for a certain time, like March first, would be required to pay thirty days prior to the month where the rental happens. So in this case, as per Counselor White's question, it would be on February first. We would be able to issue the permit for the time that you wanted to book in March on roughly December first. That's the timeline of how the town would guarantee that ice to you, but the requirement, having made a request in advance of that four-month season, the payment is only thirty days in advance of a month.
Thank you. Through you, the Chair. Yeah, thank you, Counselor White, because my question was similar and I guess I'm just going to try and be, when I'm reading it here, point three, ice rentals, all ice bookings must be paid in full at time of booking. So like if you're six months or a year out or you've got these forty-five, anyway, go ahead.
Certainly. I, I think I concluded too quickly. I talk too much sometimes and I want to be simple, but at, at the end of it all, I did introduce that comment that I made to Counselor White, that there are two scenarios. And I concluded quickly. So your question is perfect, Counselor Ego, and it allows me to finish the, the idea. The second layering of payment terms comes if you're not making a request well in advance. So let's say the ice user wanted to book their ice on March first and they came to the town on January fifteenth. So after the season has begun, at that point, it would be payment at the time of booking. And there are some terms for fields and rooms that are a little bit different, but for the most part, payment at the time of booking is required once you hit the season. So if you're not booking like a series of Thursdays through the entire season, but you just want to pick up something, then you pay at the time of booking. But if you're going to block it for an entire four-month period, you'll have thirty days prior payment, which is what I was talking about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. That makes sense. Thanks.
Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a few questions, if I may, Madam Chair. So I want to understand as well, so we have broken this into three trimesters, basically, right? January, February, March, and April, May, June, July, and August, September, October, November, and then December. So you need to, you can book that ice at any time prior to those periods. So let's say I want to host an event in November. I can book that in January, book that ice so I know I have it, but I don't have to pay it until the first of October. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I booked it, I know I have it, but I only have to book it out basically the beginning of the month prior to the event happening. So if it's happening in November, first of October, if it's happening in July, the first of June. Okay. I wanted to understand that. Thank you. And then the cancellation policy, so I pulled up two here, in specific Callingwood and Berry. So in Berry, sorry, in Callingwood, the cancellation policy, if I may, Madam Chair, facility time is reserved and not guaranteed. The Town of Calling retains the right to adjust council withdrawal or reschedule any and all allocated facility time. This will be necessary only in the event of tournaments, special events, or playoff games, or in the case of an emergency or unforeseen circumstance, all reasonable efforts will be made to advise offset, sorry, affected groups as early as possible. Organizations slash users that do not comply with other policies as established through the town, i.e. wet field policy, municipal alcohol policy, admission standards, et cetera, may have their contracts canceled. Then goes on to say that once the facility time allocation has been distributed, so they booked it and the town has said, okay, you've got it, and contracts have been firmed, user groups will not be able to cancel their time. The organization will be responsible to pay all contracted facility time for the period specified in the contract, including early morning ice. An organization may occasionally return ice to the department by providing one week written notice, but will be responsible to pay for any facility time that is not rebooked by the department. Cancellation of the facility time by either the Town of Callingwood or the user groups due to inclement weather conditions is permitted. So then for Eddie Bush Memorial Arena and the Central Park Arena in the Callingwood Curling Club, it says an administration fee of fifteen dollars plus tax will be charged for each cancellation, should written notice of a cancellation be received less than twenty-one days prior to the rental date. So as I read that, what it's saying is that once you booked it and it's been allocated, it cannot be canceled. And if it is, if we, if they can re-rent it, you'll get your money back. If they can't, you're responsible and tough beans. And for canceling it, whether you get your money back or not, there's a fifteen-dollar administrative fee applied to that because of time staff spend making that cancellation or whatever. Am I, am I understanding this correctly? Have we talked to the Town of Callingwood? Can we talk to the Town of Callingwood? And then I'm going to get into the City of Berry here.
I certainly have read the same over the past hour and I believe that if you are inferring that the Town of Wasaga Beach's proposed policy is more or less parallel to what is going on in Callingwood, I would agree one hundred percent, Mayor Smith.
Well, I'm not in, I want to be clear, Madam Chair, I'm not inferring anything. I'm simply saying as I read that, that's what it says to me. It says you're on the hook. Now, if you can, if we can re-rent it or you can help us re-rent it, we'll give you your money back happily. If we can't, then tough beans. Okay. So I'd just like to confirm that, I know that's how I read it. It'd be nice to confirm that with, with the Town of Callingwood. And then, again, if I may, Madam Chair, the cancellation policy for Berry, and I don't have the whole policy here, but cancellation policy, all cancellations must be in writing. Please refer to the City of Berry Ice Allocation Policy at berry.ca. Seasonal renters who notify the City of Berry Recreation Services at least thirty days shall receive a full refund, twenty-nine days to eight days will receive a fifty percent refund of hours returned, and seven days or less receive no refund. So similar, once it's been booked and you've got it, it's yours, you're responsible for it. I guess the only difference there is that if you give them more than thirty days notice, they'll, they'll give it back to you as the policy reads. So does our policy also fall in line with that or it's, it's all or nothing?
I would say that our policy falls in line. There is an opportunity to get fifty percent back down to seven days in Berry. The one caveat that I would add, and this is for large blocks of time, tournaments require sixty days for a full refund in Berry, period. There are no fifty percents for tournaments if you are under sixty days.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all for now.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Counselor Belanger?
Yes, thank you. Through the Chair. I, I support the cancellation policy because I think it's, that we do need to work very hard to re-rent that ice if someone's going to get their money back. But the, the one I had problems with is when we talk the hierarchy of, or the litmus test of who gets first right. And, you know, like any business, your best customers are the ones that pay the most money and rent the most ice. And so to exclude that from the decision-making seems strange to me. Like I say, as was presented to us, is potentially our third highest user and revenue generator could be by nature of being a for-profit, are allocated to the lowest hierarchy on the decision-making process. And I, I, I don't think that makes sense to me. I think there has to be a combination of who has a track record of generating the most revenue for you, who has the greatest record of not needing to cancel, and, and that has to be taken into consideration. So I, I know everybody likes a black and white world, but with most decisions, there has to be a latitude for good judgment. And so I, I think that needs to be somehow built into the consideration of the policy.
Director Roos, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor DeLeo. I was looking in the wrong direction. At any rate, to Counselor Belanger's question, we do have a caveat that allows for gray area. In fact, there are two layerings here. The first one is families often would plan a wedding. They want a wedding in June, here we are, way out in advance. How can we guarantee them that the Recplex multipurpose room is going to be available in June next year? This is a common priority that we would want to be able to accommodate. And we have written into the policy that we will bring forward a list of bookings to council on a quarterly basis or as necessary and make council aware so that they can approve that we pushed one booking out prior to the seasonal trimester, as it were. When it comes to ideas like economic development or taking care of good customers, we want to ensure that we maximize our ability to sell ice and not push people out when there are small details. We do have a bullet in the dispute resolution section of the priority sequencing that allows the town to make a decision in the best interest of the town. So this would be a situation where if we had a, a good-standing customer, that it really made sense to ensure that this weekend fell within a series of weekends that they needed, we could push rentals around in the best interest of the town and, and staff would have the ability to do that.
Thank you, Director Roos. Any other questions or comments? Mayor, Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I host a tournament this February and I want to host that tournament next February, can I book the ice during this tournament this year and block that off for next year and I still don't have to pay for it until the month prior to the use? How far in advance can I block that ice? The reason I ask, Madam Chair, my wife, who is much smarter than me, by the way, has a sign on her desk that has been there for years that says, "Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part." And so I would, I would think that if, if I'm holding, if I'm holding a tournament and I've got people there, or anything for that matter, a concert or whatever, and, and I can see that people are having fun and love in it, when I want them to sign up for next year is right here and now. Enjoying this? Is it good? Here, here's the form, sign up for next year. So I have a good idea. Now, you're, you always get some changes and some people who hang out to the last minute, whatever, but I think it gives you a good idea. So just to be clear, my question is if I've, if I'm doing something this year in November and next year in November, I want to do it again, can I immediately book now for next November and still only pay out thirty days prior to?
In simple terms, no. You have to wait for the trimester and the application period to be one hundred percent. We could create a workaround of contracting an outfit. For example, a special event would be a town-run idea, but it would be contracted with the town. So if there was a large outfit that was a, a third-party event operator that came to the town through a special events permit and council approved that we are going to do X, Y, and Z on this weekend, you could lock yourself. So if a tournament became such a thing that it was of interest of council to approve it in advance, we certainly could do that. But if you're just looking to the policy and guaranteeing one hundred percent as per the policy, you would have to wait until forty-five days prior to the four-month trimester and then we would guarantee it about thirty days before. So it, it, there is an element of risk, but I think that our operators could rest assured that we would try and stabilize their week in the fifty-two-week calendar. Today, we're booking maybe eight or nine tournaments. There are truly fifty-two weekends in a year and it doesn't really make sense for us to start pushing tournaments around if they're building a tradition and a regular following of participants.
So thank you for that, Chris. And so, you know, I think there were some good points made this morning. It's why I asked to reopen this conversation. So this is one issue. I don't have an issue with the cancellation policies. I see it now that I've read Callingwood's and Berry and I understand it. But I, this is one issue I do have because if I'm a for-profit, as, as Pean and Cream were are this morning, and I'm trying to book my business and I need this facility to do so, waiting till forty-five days before every year, that's tough. I, I can understand how that, that could be problematic. And so if it, if, if I, I would think that this is one we, we should look at because in this case, I don't have an issue with them booking a year in advance, knowing full well, however, that if our three tops of our figure skating club, meaning Wasaga Beach's figure skating organization and Wasaga Beach Minor Hockey, for whatever reason decide, which is in this case probably slim, then you could get bumped for that. But it gives some... But it gives some level of security to the business that may be renting our facility. And whether that be for hockey, whether that be for building widgets or a concert or whatever, because we do have outside people who come and say, hey, I want to host a concert, right? I think we need to be able to give some level of security there. So I think that's one area that perhaps we need to look at, and it's why I thought we should open this conversation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mayor Smith. Counselor Tims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And one of the advantages of going after everyone's gone several times is that a lot of what I was going to say has already been touched on. However, I do want to comment that I believe also that there's a flaw in, in the booking-out process, that sometimes when you're organizing events of any major size, that would not be enough time to, to really feel secure. I also took note this morning about the two-year policy review, and I, I think that's something to consider before we approve this policy. And I also feel that for-profit organizations seem to be penalized in the hierarchy situations. So I wondered if, if it would be worthwhile to take that back and, and give it some more thought.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Tim. Director Rus, would you like to go?
Certainly. I, I do take both of these comments from Mayor Smith and then Counselor Tims to be very merited, and I think that we should address these as quickly as possible to incorporate ways to, to move forward with long-term bookings and to examine, I, I think it would be quite straightforward to reopen this policy in two years. But, but the one idea I must impress on council is that there has been quite a bit of discussion on this idea, and we've done so internally too. And if you look carefully at those timelines, we are in fact beyond them. Today, we do need to, in order to execute properly, especially with the holidays upon us, and get January ice booked, a policy to fall back on. And my recommendation to council would be to adopt this policy today with a requirement for us to refine it. Otherwise, we'll go back to our existing legacy policy, which I think is something that the, the, the town wanted to move forward in our new facility with this priority idea. It will be a great litmus test for us, and I think at a time when we have more ice than we've ever had before with two versus one pads, it's a great time to launch. But the, the clock is ticking on us now because we are past November 15th, and the staff are poised to send out the request letters to our stakeholders. And if we are to add elements for long-term priority bookings, for example, and, and a way for us to get those pre-approved, we can do so in the, in the coming months. But I do think that there is a sense of urgency to adopt this policy so that we move forward in our new facility with something that's a little bit improved from our, our former legacy booking approach.
Thank you, Director Rus. Counselor Belangie?
Thank you, Chair. As I hear the comments, we sort of were moving back towards legacy if you can book a year and ahead. I just, I, I like the part you indicated where, you know, in the, in the best interest of the town, we're able to make exceptions. Because the whole idea of legacy is that, let's say we have a, an event that attracts 300 people and produces, you know, $3,000 in revenue, and we continually book that a year out, and then somebody 45 days ahead says, look, we got, we're going to invest this amount of money, we think we can attract 10,000 people and generate $25,000, and we, well, we know we've already booked that ice a year ago. Like, I mean, so, so, so I, I get the two sides of it, but it's, it's that loophole. And I think if it comes to council, I think if it's a, if it's absolutely in the best interest of the community, that a certain very successful revenue-generating event is council decides that we will allow them to lock in a year out, then we can do that. But for the majority of ice, allowing the 45 days allows us to look and say, what is in the best interest of the town? And then allocate accordingly and try to accommodate everyone the best we can. So I, I think you addressed that, but maybe it's in the fine print, and it has to be a little more dominant.
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor Belangie, without taking time to read into this announcing to council in advance that we would book an idea like a wedding or, or something that has priority. I, I do feel like we have the ability to move forward with this policy right now if council would like me to take the time and find that caveat. I, I would say also further to Counselor Belangie's comments, council should be rest assured that nine out of 10 of our booking user groups are, need only 45 days to be organized for the winter season. Private enterprise isn't bumping into minor hockey's prime season much, and vice versa, they'll be ready for the summer season. The bulk of our bookings can get organized, and once in a while, if there's something that really needs a year in advance, we have a caveat to do that.
Thank you, Director Rus. Counselor White?
I feel like we are really debating the, the everything out of this one. Madam Chair, if I may, I have two comments. What is in the best interest of the community in, in, from my perspective sitting here is who paid for it? And if we have local community groups, not-for-profits or whatever, that are to stand from a $60 million, 100% resident-funded facility, they should be the beneficiaries of that initiative. That was what we took on as a town, that's what we've all decided to do. I don't think that they should be, you know, moved around, pushed around for, for profit, because that for-profit is a funny line. Yes, it could be a small group, like we see here today, which is very important to our community, but it could also be a very large group like Live Nation or something like that, looking to book a concert and, and have vanilla ice come back onto our ice. So you need to, you need to understand the distinction of who the benefit's for. And I think that we could have this debate all day long, Counselor Belangie and I could duke this out. But this is all well and good to talk about, all this what-if scenarios, but my question then to Chris is this, what's the impact of all this? Do you foresee in the next, let's say, two years, having these situations be problematic? Or do we now have enough ice that this is all just well and good conversation? What's the impact?
My instinct is that we have lots of tournament weekends, and we have lots of after-school ice, and we have lots of weekend ice, and that we will likely take a couple of years to ramp into full capacity. So I, I think that the urgency and the conflicts are not upon us today. I think that Counselor Tim's suggestion to bring this back in two years minimum, or maximum, i- is a good one, and I, I think that we could do that quickly here today. I, I do not think that we're going to be at capacity in January, February of 2024.
Andrew?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listening to the conversation and the debate, it strikes me that there's, there's too many unresolved issues here, and I'm wondering if council would like to refer this back to staff, and we could bring it back. From my perspective, the, one of the biggest issues that I had concern with when I rejoined the town was the legacy issue. And I felt that it was being misused, and it was blocking people like Kareem and Pina and making it very challenging from them actually breaking into the business. Now, they've, they've hustled hard, and they've managed to get some ice in, in their network. But I, so I, I was really troubled by the whole legacy issue, and, and we're trying to find that middle ground. I'm not sure that we found it today. So I, I think there's, my recommendation, there's two options. We could go with what's before you today, subject to coming back with some refinements, or simply refer it back to staff, and we can take what we've heard today into consideration and come back in the, the next meeting with some, perhaps some suggested changes.
Thank you, Andrew. Counselor Tims?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I was going to say something like that, Mr. CAO, because you're telling us, Chris, that we're not going to have a problem in January. I think there's time to refine this policy so that it feels better for us and to pass something knowing we can, we can tweak it as we go. I, I would not be able to support a, a yes vote today.
Thank you, Counselor Tims. Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I can't support it as it is today either, but I, I can tell you that I understand where staff's coming from, that, you know, they need to start booking ice January's coming or February, whatever it is when we get this, this building open, and that they need to start. So my question would be, if we, if we push this off two more weeks to have discussion and bring it back, is that going to be a huge hindrance on you and your team booking for January? I, I say that because I'm a big believer that we should have, we need to have a policy in place always to fall back on. We can't just go out there and say, well, we're tweaking it, but for now, we're starting to book. I think that was, that'll become, or the potential for that to be extremely problematic is great. We could approve the policy as it is and say, we're coming back in two weeks, and then that allows Director Rus and his team to move forward. But is that fair to whoever books that now if we change it in two weeks from now? So that's problematic. So Director Rus, if we push this two more weeks, is that going to be the end of the world, or are you going to come back and talk a lot to us? Your words not mine.
In a word, we need to start booking ice in January. It is cumbersome to not pass this policy today. We will have to pick to go with the legacy policy only and start to book the ice in January. We've held off too long. So I have to do legacy, or I have to get a positive vote today.
If I may, Madam Chair, so, so then perhaps we could pass this today with an amendment to, I mean, we could, we could add an amend that this be re-looked at in two years. We could make any amendment we could make today and come back in two weeks and adjust that. So in January, any of the bookings that you feel you'd be booking now for January, hearing what you've heard in this conversation today with hierarchy and, and the ability to book out further in advance, do you see that being problematic if you start booking today and in two weeks we, we come and make these other changes we're talking about?
I, I would say that the January to April calendar will start to seal up. And then the, the decisions that we make moving forward will apply to the April to September period.
Okay. I think, I think that would be, so we could, okay, I think that would be reasonable. So do, I guess my only question is then, do we want to make amendments to what we do know for sure today, and that is that we're going to revisit this in two years and whatever else we feel? Or do we want to just leave it as is and then look at this to correct it in the next meeting, hopefully, so we get it done sooner than later for the next quarter? That would be my question, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the motion, or would you like to do the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So based on the conversation, what I'm hearing is that we'll put the motion before council at this time with a caveat that a report be brought back at the next regular meeting addressing concerns raised today. If that's all right with council, then I'll propose the following. That the report titled Amendments to the Facility Allocation Policy and Recreation and Facilities Refund Policy to the Joint Committee of the Hole in Council Meeting of November 16th, 2023 be received. That the amended facility allocation policy attached as Appendix A be approved. That the amended recreation and facilities refund policy attached as Appendix B be approved. And that Bylaw 2022-24, being a bylaw to adopt the facility allocation policy 411, and Bylaw 202191, being a bylaw to adopt, adopt the recreation and facilities refund policy be repealed. That a report be brought back at the next regular council meeting to address all concerns raised within the policy at this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I get a mover and a seconder, please? No?
Question, if I may?
Absolutely. Mayor Smith?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to be clear, then staff today will start booking for the first quarter, or the, sorry, the first trimester. So they'll be booking for January, February, March, and April, nothing past that, no matter what anyone requests. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Counselor Belangie?
Sure. Just, just a clarification. So what, I think what you said is we're approving to move forward with the revised policy, but we're not passing the bylaws at this time.
Sorry, just for point of clarification, the bylaws that we're repealing just adopted the previous policies that we do have, so it's just a matter of housekeeping.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Belangie. Okay. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Mayor Smith, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snell. All in favor? All in favor and one decline. One opposed. Thank you. This concludes the Community Services Business Unit of Committee of the Hole. I will now pass the chair to Counselor Tims for Public Works Section.
Thank you, Counselor Delio. I'm aware that there have been no reports pulled from the Public Works Section. Are there any comments from council on any of the reports? Seeing none, I will there, therefore, read the motion. Resolve that the Public Works Section of the Committee of the Hole hereby receive the November 16th, 2023 Consent List Item 9.2, and that all recommendations contained therein be adopted. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Delio, Counselor White, all in favor? Thank you. Carried. I will now pass to the chair, Counselor Belangie, for the Development Services Section of the meeting.
Thank you. Will now address the Development Service Section. It is my understanding that there's only one item pulled, 9.3.2 by myself. So I will, unless there's additional comments, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Belangie. I thought I pulled that one as well. That's the planning legislative changes? 9.3.2?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, because I think this, it just sort of just goes to the earlier comment in regards to when the NBCA was here earlier this morning in regards, oops, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So we'll just have you pass the consent motion?
Oh, sorry.
And then we'll go to the report and discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. So resolve that the Development Service Section of Committee of the Hole hereby receive the November 16th, 2023 Consent List Items 9.3, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted. Excluding agenda items pulled for motion and voted on separately, and we've already indicated what's pulled, so can I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Tims and Counselor Eagle, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Sorry, the, the second item, I wasn't sure which one comes first. Is it 9.3.2?
That's the only report pulled you can proceed.
So I, I just pulled this item because there were a few endarounds that the town could possibly use to, or, I guess, prevent being in a position of being negatively financially impacted by the bill. One being approval in principle, and the second one being a, what did I write down here? A refusal. So both of those have some issues attached, but primarily I pulled it, and I, my memory, I don't recall, I think a letter has already been sent to the province. But when we, when we talk about being impacted by other organizations or third-party, like the NBCA, I think that's a concern for all municipalities, and we certainly should be writing the province and indicating that when, when the delay is out of the control of the municipality, then these penalties should not apply. I, somehow in the back of my mind, I think we had already supported a letter similar to that, you know, six months ago or, or whatever it is, but I'm not sure. But I don't know if you But I don't know if you want to speak to this. The financial impact was potentially considerable, and to be totally out of our hands is, to me, cruel and unusual punishment for a municipality.
Through your worship. I'm not sure if it's unusual anymore, but it certainly is cruel. Mr. Mark Bryan was actually going to be here. He's probably on route right now to address council and speak to the report. And also, just a shout out to Samantha Hannah, who was another planner, who's, I'm not sure if she's back, she was representing the town today at a presentation with the Realtors. So I just want to give credit to them as they were instrumental in the preparation of the report. So to speak to the matter, I would not doubt that when Bill 109 came up, I'm not sure if I myself was here, or the former director, Mr. Huron, was here, but no doubt, we probably did give those comments to the province. I believe our CAO, who has connections and directly in the GTA, will confirm with me that the matters that we're addressing here are nothing new. It's been a problem that has been identified by probably most municipalities in Ontario. And to date, notwithstanding the fact that those letters of concern have been submitted to the government of Ontario, Bill 109 still exists. To their credit, the Government of Ontario did defer the implementation of Bill 109 to July of this year. Originally, it was supposed to be January. So not that I'm waving the flag of the provincial government, but to give credit where credit is due, they did hear some of the concerns. They did defer its implementation, but they have not repealed it. So the reality that we have is that applications that the town has now received after July 1 of this year for site plan approvals, OPAs, or zoning bylaw amendments, we now have a clock that ticks, which is on page two of your staff report. Mark was able, with Samantha's help, to tell you exactly how much money we have to give back and when if we don't render a decision. The workarounds, which is an ugly word, but it's the reality, the workarounds that we have is, we can grant conditional site plan approvals, because the reality is, there is no municipality that I know of that can approve a site plan within 60 days and look at the actual drawings before they do that. So that is ridiculous, in my professional opinion. Well, what we can do for that is we can grant a conditional site plan approval, subject to certain conditions that they have to fulfill. We think that that will stop the clock, unless the courts or the tribunal renders a decision, which I'm not aware of yet, saying that that isn't consistent with the Act. So the site plan applications, I think we have a handle on. The zoning bylaws, and particularly the zoning bylaws and the official plan amendments, it's not that easy. Zoning bylaw amendments, perhaps a little bit more, we can use, and we could always use, holding zones, where we approve a matter in principle, which is what Mark's report is getting to, where we say, in principle, we think this is supportable, council. There's two, three, four, five things that have to be sorted out, that we don't have the answers to. Place a holding zone on it. When those four or five things are ready, we come back to council with an H removal, and you know that those four or five things have been addressed, and then the use can proceed. Official plan amendments, it's a little bit more challenging in that we are not the, we adopt official plans amendments here, it's the county who approves them. I know the county has made changes where I think their director now has approval authority for certain matters, so that will shorten that time period. I'm hoping that the Act says that once council adopts it, the clock stops, and it doesn't include the county, because we don't have, the mayor and the deputy mayor may have some control of the county, but I, as a planner, do not. So that is a challenge. So in terms of the refusal, we as staff and you as council always had the ability to refuse an application. It was very unfortunate that we are having to be forced into a situation where we're asking council to refuse an application, not because the application may not have merit, but simply because we have a time period where, if we don't make a decision, we have to give back money. And that is not good planning. That is simply a reaction to legislation requirements. None of us here want to give a refusal. Let me say this professionally. We do not make refusal requests to council lightly. We do so because we don't think the application has planning merit. We're being put into a position where we're asking you to give refusals, not necessarily because of the planning merit, but because we don't want to have to give back our revenue generators, and that's not fair, in my estimation. But it doesn't matter what I think is fair, it matters what the provincial legislation requires. It also doesn't contemplate the fact that there are those applicants out there who don't want us to give a refusal are not pressuring us to give a recommendation, because on their end of things, they need also time to react to comments that they get at a public meeting. It's not just council reacting to public meeting comments, it's also the applicant who has to give us comments or responses to comments. So in a way, they're also being punished. Suffice to say that there are some solutions that we have, internal processes and things of that nature. There are workarounds for site plan approvals, there are things like holding zones, but there is no silver bullet that will fix all of the problems, save and except a relook at Bill 109 and perhaps the unintended consequences of those decisions. We all appreciate that the province is trying to build 1.5 million homes in 10 years. We understand that, we get it. But I'm not sure that forcing municipalities to give back their fees is an incentive to come up with perhaps not very well-conceived planning decisions is the way to do it. And again, I think when we last spoke to this in October, when council asked us to bring forward the report, it was never the planning department's intention to single out any one particular commenting agency, be it a conservation authority, or a ministry, or whomever, or a school board, for that matter. But the reality is, is that when we are charged with giving you professional recommendations, we do so taking in the considerations and comments of all the parties who we've circulated to, and the province hasn't told us as planners, hey, you know what, you can start cutting corners now, you don't have to circulate it to everybody. They haven't said that. They just say, hurry up and get it done quicker. So a long-winded explanation, I apologize for that, but I feel the frustration as council does.
For that, I apologize, I now realize this was pulled by a number of other people, but before I ask for additional comments, I believe the CAO wants to speak.
Yes, thank you through the Chair. And I just wanted to share, prior to rejoining Wasaga Beach and shortly after this bill was passed, I was a member of a number of working groups with all of the large cities, Toronto, Mississauga, Markham, Vaughan, you name it. And every municipality that I am aware of in this province has come to the same realization that Trevor has just explained to you. It unfortunately, Bill 109 is a punishing piece of legislation, and it was designed to be developer-friendly. And unfortunately, it just does not work for municipalities. So virtually every municipality is following the same course of action. There have been numerous amendments and resolutions and letters written to the province. We are hopeful that they will listen and amend this legislation, but I believe what has been outlined to you is the prudent way to proceed. What most are trying to do is try and upfront as much to the pre-con stage, so that you can get as much of the issues identified and hopefully resolved before those applications are submitted. But the unfortunate thing about Bill 109 is there's no stop-the-clock provision. So if things are beyond our control, we're doing everything right, we're working fast, we're pushing stuff through, but if the developer's slow-playing and deliberately running out the clock on us, there's only so many things we can do about it, and that is a tactic that is being used. So unfortunately, what Trevor has explained is the only recourse we have to prevent the municipality from bleeding revenue.
Thank you. I have Councillor White, Deputy Mayor Snell, and Councillor Timms, so I'll start with Councillor White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, so, understanding everything that's just been said, I don't know who to direct this to, either you or the CFO, but do we have any pushback with the fees that we pay out? So, for example, the NBCA was here this morning, and if I ever hear of a roadblock, it's usually NBCA, or maybe some now, thanks to Bill 23, some third-party peer reviewers. You know, these, we pay fees, are we not able to leverage those fees and say, hey, you know, you missed 3% or 4%, which is their number of application deadlines, can we push back on 3% to 4% of, or the amount of those fees as a way of punishing them into compliance? And as brutal as that sounds, this is brutal for our municipality, and same thing with other people, like when we contract out peer reviews, can we say that these peer reviews need to be completed by this amount of time, or the invoice gets discounted to some degree?
Through the Chair. I won't speak on behalf of the CFO, but I believe the CFO has given us a little bit of a notation here, saying that we cannot deduct anything from the standard levy that the NBCA applies every year. Through the negotiations of an MOU, which I believe Andrew might want to speak to in here in a moment, if that's necessary, if we were to sign one with the, a new one with the Conservation Authority, we could have the option of inserting a discounting fee for late responses. I don't pretend to understand all the nuances of that, I may defer to others. On the matter of the peer review, I think, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had pretty good success with our peer reviewer that we've retained. I'm not so much worried about getting comments from the peer reviewer, because they seem to be quite willing to work with us and get us comments on a fairly quick time, three weeks. That's pretty good in my world. So I'm not so concerned about the peer reviewer if the town is the one who's doing the peer review. We have to remember that through Bill 23, some things the town is responsible if we wish to have peer reviews done, but there's still a lot that the Conservation Authority is, and that's a little bit of a schism that we were talking about, Mark and I, about making sure that when we do preconsultations, when we get comments from the NBCA, it behooves all of us to make sure, Conservation Authority, this is where you're dealing with, and town, if you can't deal with all of it, you tell the town what we're responsible for. So then when I go to the peer reviewer, I can say, look at these sections of the EIS, but don't worry about the rest of it, that's the Conservation Authority. So I'm not sure if that answers the question adequately with my colleagues.
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. If I may, through the Chair, just to expound on the Director's comments, we are still in a period of transition with the NBCA as we sort out who's responsible for what, so that's probably going to add a bit of delay for the foreseeable future. But hopefully, we can work out those relationships, what interests we have to cover off on and what they have to cover off on. But our peer reviewers, peer review comments have been generally timely, but of course, as mentioned earlier, there's no requirement on the part of the applicant to respond to those peer review comments in a timely manner. So it's great that we are getting timely comments from our peer reviewer, but that just helps, but it doesn't solve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question back to you. If I just understand what you just said, so if an applicant intentionally delays a response, it could trigger a refund? I don't understand why they wouldn't just all do that.
Through the Chair, if they see that as being in their interest, then yeah, that's a distinct possibility that they would do that. I think it's counterproductive. I think them having greater certainty with review and approval would be desirable, but is a possibility.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, next.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. My comment is very similar to Councillor White's. I don't understand the reasoning behind this legislation. But one of the questions I had is, I'm not sure, does your team do this now, or will you be doing it going forward, is to track the timing of the process so that we can figure out who's the cog in the wheel? Are we seeing some consistent patterns of delays and deferrals that are impacting us financially?
Through the Chair. Fortunately, we've only received a small handful of applications of zoning bylaw amendments and OPAs and site plans after July 1. So we really haven't had any impact as of yet. The one, an example was, we just recently did, if you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, we did a public meeting for 630 Sunnydale Trail where Christine Loft was here regarding a townhouse. Her claims applied for an official plan of zoning and a site plan approval. Coincidentally enough, days after her public meeting, her 60 days on her site plan application was coming due. So what we did in that case was, we prepared a conditional site plan approval, and we just conditioned it saying, you have a conditional site plan approval, subject to this, this, and this, and an official plan amendment, and a zoning bylaw amendment. So we were able to circumvent that issue. But we still have to deal with her official plan and her zoning bylaws, so that will be probably something that was going to be coming to council here very, very soon, because we're up against Bill 109.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you for that answer, but just to sort of be specific in regards to tracking, because if you could sort of explain what the process is there so that we can identify the problem people?
Certainly. So what we do is, we simply put it in our calendar. So the planner who's assigned to the file has a calendar. We program into the calendar our due dates, no different than what we do for getting committee of adjustment reports done or any other thing. So that's how we're keeping track of it. We just use our e-calendars in Outlook, and we, once we deem an application complete, we start the clock, and we program, okay, what's 45 days, what's 60 days, what's 100, whatever it is, so that we make sure that if we are forced to come with a staff report or whatever to council, that we hit the council date. Hopefully, we never have a situation where we're in between an election, and there is no council dates to go to, between November of this year and January of the, but we'll cross that one in two or three years from now. But yeah, we keep track of the dates that way.
Sorry, just, so I really understand. So it sounds obviously like in terms of the processes, but when we speak of, like, for example, this morning, we spoke about the NBCA, right? So if there's a problematic third party, or if it is the developer who's intentionally delaying, are we tracking that this file was submitted back to them at this date, this time, you know, came back this date, this time, and that that's, so that we can establish patterns, is basically what I'm asking.
Certainly, through the Chair. We can do that, we can do that easily, because we, all of our documentation, we send in emails, and an email tells us the date and the time that we send it. So if it comes down to assigning blame because somebody is not responding quickly to staff, that's an easy thing for us to figure out, we just have to look at the date. For example, if Samantha's working on a file, she'll send an email out, we can go back and figure out what day that is, and if we haven't had a response back from that party for two months, well, it's pretty clear that we know that it's with them, and it's been with them for quite some time. Same with the Conservation Authority, same with the ministry, same with anybody else.
Turn it over to our GM of Planning and...
Thank you, Councillor Blonge, and through you to the Deputy Mayor. I think I know where your line of questioning is going, and, you know, once we get the CityView software, you know, up and running in the planning department, it's going to allow us to track things a little bit more accurately, and I just, I wanted to speak on this just because while the NBCA was here this morning, I sent a quick message off to Tracy up in our department, and I said, how many of our building files is the NBCA involved in? And she said, let me do a quick query in the CityView, and within 10 minutes, she was able to tell me that, you know, since we started using... that, you know, since we started using CityView, 58 out of 586 single-family dwellings also had accompanying NVCA permits. So, the software allows us to quickly drill down, get answers on information and questions like this. So, I would say that as the planning department gets their module stood up moving forward, it will give us a very, very good ability to report real-time on where the problems are. And I can tell you, being implemented in the building department with CityView, we use it extensively for those types of things, and for communication back. We're held to very tight timelines within the building department, and based on what type of application it is. And we send demand letters out. We tell people that, you know, the clock is ticking, and we're waiting on information from you. So, the software will give us some capability this year that we haven't had in the past.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Through the Chair, just one final, because I think that's going to be really important, because when you read the report, you know, we have a potential of a taxation increase because of remitting these fees back. So, when it comes to the taxpayer, I think at the end of the year, myself anyways, I would love to know who was the problem, so that the taxpayer can see that our staff is doing absolutely everything you possibly can in your department to realize this revenue. But it was, in this situation, 10% was because of this situation, whatever, right? Just so that, because it does have such significant financial impacts. How soon do you think that your department will be fully operating on the CityView, or is that already mostly in the queue, so that we can start to track this right away? That's my last question, sorry.
It's going to be a work in progress. We've just started having meetings about the planning module. We are in possession of the module. When CityView was brought in, the planning department at the time was not a participant, so the module hasn't really been vetted against, you know, real-time applications. So, that's a process that's going to take some time. But, you know, we've been through it in building. We've been through it to a certain degree in bylaws, so we have a lot of lessons learned. So, I would say that the implementation within the bylaw department, or, sorry, within the planning department, will be much more streamlined.
Turn it to the CEO had comment.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add one point, and I'm going to keep this comment high-level and respectful. There was a lot of misinformation floating out in the public prior to Bill 109 coming into force. And essentially, it was finger-pointing at municipalities, saying that the municipalities were the cog in the wheel that were slowing everything down. It's just not true. And virtually every municipality that has software, like we are in the process of implementing, has the data to support this. So, staff work incredibly hard to ensure that when we get an application, we process things in a timely manner. And I just wanted that to be out in the public, that the finger-pointing that was going on, not only to our staff, but to municipal staff across the province, it really was not deserved. And again, there are some real issues with Bill 109, and I am hoping that the province listens to it and amends this bill.
Counselor Timms, and then the Mayor.
Thank you. And my question is a short one, not an easy one. After reading this report, the only thing I wrote to myself was, rather than receive this report for information, is there an action we can take?
Through the Chair, I wouldn't presume to tell council what action to take, but I'm sure there is, but I would look to the Chair and the Clerk for that information.
As I had indicated earlier, I believe the letter I was thinking about has already been sent. It was in our comments. So, I think any action that we're waiting for a response has probably already happened. But with that, I'll turn it to the Mayor for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry, Mr. Chair. Who's our, well, I can ask the question. It is what it is. Who's our biggest and worst culprit outside of the town of Wasaga Beach in our issues with applications that holds us up?
So, essentially, you're calling me out to call out the person, the agency?
Well, that's just the way it works.
I understand. So, I'm not throwing out anybody under the bus, but I think suffice to say, the Conservation Authority has been demonized, and is one of those agencies that is tardy, for whatever reasons, mostly staffing. But Conservation Authorities is one that we weigh on comments quite a bit. But they're not alone. Occasionally, we do require comments from provincial agencies, not a lot, but sometimes, like the Ministry of Transportation, and other times, it's other agencies that are interested, such as school boards. So, but of all of them, and I'll look to Mark if he disagrees with me, it's the Conservation Authority that seems to be the one, and it's only when the Conservation Authority has a jurisdiction, or there's an environmental feature. If the Conservation Authority doesn't have a jurisdiction, obviously, we're not going to get a comment from them, and they can't be blamed for that. But I think that's a fair statement. I'll look to Mark to see if he would add or disagree with that.
Through the Chair to the Mayor. I generally concur that, in terms of our stakeholder partners, that's where we experience most of the delay. But again, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that sometimes it's the applicant teams, applicants' consulting teams, that don't get back to us in a timely manner. And something that I don't know if it's been mentioned thus far, is that, in general, a lot of the issues that are being dealt with, whether they require the Conservation Authority's involvement, or they require additional and substantial involvement from the consulting team for the applicant, they are complex issues. So, that whole piece has to be recognized as well, that the province has imposed these timelines, and the timelines may be insufficient to deal with the complexity of the matters that need to be considered. And they need to be considered as per the provincial direction, the provincial policy direction on these issues, too.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So, I couldn't agree more, Mark, with your last comment there. They are complex issues in many cases, but the policy is the policy. And for them to not respond to that within the guidelines of the policy is no different than us. So, to Counselor Timms' point, is there an action we can take? I think there are. I think there are several, but two that come to mind quickly is, you know, we're now looking to do possibly an MOU, and allow more funding to the NVCA. Perhaps that funding through the MOU is tied that says, if you don't respond, you lose X amount of funding. And on the other side, with respect to the applicants, if they're the ones holding it up, and we're going to be penalized, then perhaps we have to add to our fees schedule, that if you hold us up, and we fall outside that, that loss is now billed to the developer, so that the ratepayer and the taxpayer is not being penalized for that. Now, some people would look and say, yeah, well, that's kind of anti-development. Well, it is, but the developer, or the homeowner, whomever in this case, has to understand that, you know, the taxpayer can't be on the hook because of their tardiness, or inability to meet the provincial policy. And maybe that prompts them to also send letters to the province to say, hey, this policy's not working. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have a comment, Andrew?
Oh, the second portion, I'm not sure, and I would defer to Trevor and Jocelyn. I don't believe we have the ability to do that. You're going to stay out of that one?
Do you mind repeating? I'm sorry, I was reading something else.
Essentially, it's a workaround. If we have to refund money, passing it back to the developer, I don't think you're allowed to do that under the legislation.
Through your worship, no. No, we would have to refund that through a proper process, but that one wouldn't work.
I'll just make a couple of final comments. First of all, I don't think we are throwing the NVCA under the bus. They clearly had some serious staffing issues over the last year, and as a board, I believe we've given them the resources to rectify that. So, hopefully going forward, we will see some significant improvement. But the one thing, if the bill stands, I guess what's most unfortunate, is this is about building homes faster. And when you take a municipality like Wasaga Beach, that is so fast-growing, and that has so many homes on the books, and that per capita, we are building homes probably in the top 5% in the country, and then we're penalized. Like, to me, there maybe should have been a criteria that really addressed the penalty to those municipalities that are struggling to build homes, not the ones that are doing a great job of it. So, with that, I'll pass it to the Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up to my last point, then. So, I'm not asking us to not give a developer, for example, back the percentage that they should get back, because we didn't meet the timelines. I'm saying, can we not have a fee or penalty in place, that if they don't meet timelines, with responses within that application timeframe, that we couldn't apply to them? That may be the same or more significant than what it is we're going to lose. That's my point.
Your worship, there's a possibility through the rates and fees, we might be able to do that, but I think staff should discuss it and review further whether or not that's a viable option.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to see that looked at and brought back to us, so as that we know, because, I mean, the problem with this is, if the developer wants a break on their development fees, they say, well, we'll just hold up the process.
I'll look to the Clerk. Do we need a motion, or can that just be direction?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe it can just be direction. The rates and fees are coming back November 30th, so, or a report following that as well.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, through the Chair. To the Mayor's point, I'd also like to see your suggestion around the MOU with the NVCA, because just given your quick numbers there, Dani, they're occupying 10% of our permits right now. So, that's a significant impact. And knowing what we know in terms of the challenges there, I would also like to see us provide direction today for perhaps our CAO to reach out to the NVCA, and thank them again for coming today. But that, you know, additional conversation happened. We spoke at length about this particular matter, and that we have requested for staff to track properties and applications, and just to sort of make them aware that we've got a big lens on this one right now. Would that make sense to the table and to our CAO? I'd ask for your direction on that.
CEO?
Yeah, thank you. And if I could circle back to the Mayor's first request, we can certainly look at that. My gut reaction, and I would look to Trevor to confirm this, part of what he discussed in his report, is the two options that we have available to us. You can offer a conditional approval, or you can refuse an application. So, if we get the sense that a developer is deliberately slow-playing to try and get a refund, you can refuse the application, and then it does not have to get absorbed by the community. Now, there's a whole game that can be played there, that, again, we don't want to get into. Triggering a refusal, so you can go to the land tribunal, is one. But again, there are a couple of options that Trevor has in his report that address that specifically. I'm not sure, trying to figure out another third scenario with a financial penalty is probably worthwhile. Trevor, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I don't pretend to understand the nuances of all the opportunities we have for penalties. My recollection of 1669 of the Planning Act and fees is that we're supposed to be charging fees for cost recovery. I don't know that the Government of Ontario has inserted anything about penalties and fees, but I think I can talk to Jocelyn and Andrew and figure out if that's something we can do.
Okay. And then, on the second point, absolutely. We plan on having discussions with the NVCA. We do have to, we have the option of bringing forward an MOU to council, and that's something that we've been thinking about over the last little while. So, based on the conversations today, we'll regroup and give that some consideration, and circle back with the NVCA before we bring that forward to council. I'd also like an opportunity to meet with some of our neighbors. I know there are some that are not proceeding with an MOU. I'd like to have a chat with them and understand the reasoning why, so that we can provide a wholesome picture for council.
Are any further comments? That the report titled Planning Legislative Changes, Bill 109, to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting of November 16, 2023, be received for information. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor White and Counselor Timms, all those in favor? With that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Schnell for General Government.
Thank you, Counselor Blonge. So, I'm aware that there's several items pulled in this section, 9.4.1, both 1 and 9, 9.4.4, 9.4.6, 9.4.8, 9.4.9, 9.4.10. So, before we get into those items, are there any comments or questions on any of the other items? Okay, seeing none. Resolve that the General Government Section of Committee of the Whole hereby receive the November 16, 2023 Consent List, item 9.4, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I get a mover and a seconder? Counselor White and Counselor Timms, all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Moving to the first item, under 9.4.1, number 1, this was pulled by Counselor Blonge, the September 25, 2023 Catherine Fife, MPP Waterloo, regarding requesting support for Bill 21.
Thank you. I realize that if we don't pull the item, and it just goes through, that we're acknowledging receiving the report. But there's been quite a bit of information on this over the, in the news over the last year, and I think it's important that hopefully a lot of municipalities support that Till Death Do Us Part Act motion. So, I don't know if we need to formally do that, or at a future meeting, I'll look to the Clerk. But I've been talking to a couple of the counselors, and I think there's a general consensus that there's some support for this, so.
Okay, and I'll move to Counselor Timms.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Actually, I did pull this piece after consultation with the Clerk, and I am asking council to support the first item of correspondence from Waterloo, MPP Catherine Fife, requesting a show of support for Bill 21, the Fixing Long-Term Amendment Act, also known, as Counselor Blonge mentioned, the Till Death Do Us Part Act. This bill amends long-term care residents' rights by adding the right to remain with their life partners when admitted. The idea of separating couples after a long lifetime together is heartbreaking. Here in Wasaga Beach, we value the contributions of our older adult community, and we want them to live their final years with dignity and love as they age and care. Bill 21 passed a second reading in the legislature one year ago yesterday, and was referred to the Social Policy Committee, but it has not moved forward. Our support would keep attention on the bill to end the separation of couples in long-term care, and I will make the motion if I can get a seconder.
Okay, and anyone would like to second that motion? Mayor Smith? Are there any other comments or questions on that motion? Okay, all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Going next to number 9, which is November 7, 2023, Municipality of Wawa, regarding support Bill C310, and that was pulled by Counselor Blonge.
Yes, sorry, I believe that was related to the tax break for volunteer firefighters, and I did have some conversation with our fire chief, and although at the current time, this doesn't... this doesn't apply significantly to our municipality, the percentage of the province that is kept safe by volunteer firefighters is, I believe you said, around 70%. And these people risk their life on a volunteer basis, and I would certainly like us to support or make a motion to support this increase in tax savings for those individuals. If I can get a seconder. Mayor Smith?
Just one sec, I'll look to our clerk, please.
Sorry.
Sorry, Madam Chair, if you want to, we have a mover if you want to call for a seconder.
Okay, and I'll have a seconder, please. Mayor Smith? And all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Before moving on, I'd also like to just mention the four letters of support that we received from various communities in our province in regards to our motion regarding the task force for the illegal car rallies, so we thank them for that. Going on to 9.4.4, Property Standards Committee, the minutes, June 20, 2023, this was pulled by Counselor Belanger, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm not, I don't want to refer to the item in the minutes, just to say in reading through, I want to ensure that our bylaws are strong enough to, that we are never in a situation where an individual's property is rendered less saleable or less valuable because of the condition of a neighbor's property. I believe that needs to be addressed proactively and not by complaint. There's been a number of situations over the last six months that came to my attention, whether due to health reasons or other, that individuals put their properties up for sale and found that there wasn't a lot of interest because of the condition of a neighbor's property. So with that, I think both our general manager of building and bylaw and our bylaw manager would like to speak to this. So maybe I'll give it to Rachel first and.
Thank you, and through the chair. I know we followed up on the inquiries previous to this, but just to give a little bit of background information, we have been working on a property standards and clean yards bylaw to update them over the winter, and I think we're going to be doing a full clean and renew them, which is especially outdated for the property standards bylaw. I did want to mention that we do have quite a few sections already that would pertain to the sightliness of a property, also if a property is out of character with the surrounding environment. So although we might not be specific to some of the concerns that you did raise in the minutes here, such as, you know, we don't have a violation necessarily for the amount of tarps on a property, but we do have a lot of different sections that pertain to sightliness, what's under the tarps, is it unused items, is it derelict motor vehicles? So we really use those other sections to make sure that we're still able to effectively resolve these. I also wanted to mention too that the bylaw department has a winter work plan, which includes all of the full-time officers, property standards or not. Basically, we split the town up into different sections to make sure we're managing all areas of town and nothing's missed. And basically, we will be proactively dealing with any property standards deficiencies that are noted. I also think it's important to note that during the work plan meeting, we really focused on the fact that, you know, some of us have been employed here for quite a number of years, some of us are new, some of us have lived here. So we go by a lot of properties that are just accustomed to, you know, what we see, and we definitely want to take a different look, you know, pretend we've never been here, we're visiting, what do we think is unsightly? So I think a lot of attention has been recently brought to that. And definitely even over the summer, not that I want to get into it too much, but even changing our enforcement abilities for repeat offenders, properties that have some history to them, making sure work orders are being completed, like compared to other years where maybe one work order was done. I can happily say, I think in the last couple of months, we've done over 10, which doesn't seem like a large number, but it's a lot of work that goes into them, and it just shows that these things aren't being ignored. Thank you.
Okay, and Danny, did you want to speak as well?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah. I guess what I'd like to say is, when we try to write, we're going to reimagine bylaw enforcement. And maybe I'll just, you know, invite the group to think back to last summer and some of the issues that we were facing, and they were issues that we faced in the past. And we decided to reimagine how we're going to approach it. We got clear direction from council as to the outcome that we wanted, and then we went about making sure that we stopped the behavior in our community that we didn't want here. I think as we embark upon the rewrite of the bylaws this winter, if our focus is to try and write a bylaw that covers every possible infraction, you end up with bylaws that are, you know, hundreds of pages long, they defy reading, they're confusing for our residents, and they're confusing for the officer that is trying to enforce them. So I think what bylaws really can allow us to do is promote the type of behavior we want. And that's the focus that we're going to take through the winter as we sort of reimagine all of our bylaws in terms of we need to clearly be setting the bar for what it is we want. And just a simple example, residential storage is one of the things that we come up against often, and everybody has a different idea of what is an acceptable means by which they can enclose stored goods on their property. And I think, you know, the opportunity for us is to say, if you're going to have storage on your property, if you're going to have an accessory structure, this is our expectation of what it's going to look like. Anything that doesn't look like that is a violation of the bylaw. So we clearly define what it is that we want, and anything that isn't that is an infraction of the bylaw by virtue of not being what it is that we've prescribed. So it makes for shorter, easier to understand bylaws, and as long as we rely on the enforcement tools that are there for us in the municipal act, which, again, were on display this summer when we took on some of the issues that we face in the community, they're swift, they're effective, and they work, right? So we're going to scope the bylaws down, we're going to make sure that they clearly set the bar and make it clear to everybody in our community, whether you're a resident or whether you're a business, what the expectation is, and then we're going to work to make sure that people are complying with them. So I think there's an easier way to do it than what historically we've done in town, and we're going to set about doing that this winter.
Excellent, thank you very much. Follow-up, Joe? And I'll come to the mayor.
Just in talking before the meeting, along the same vein, there's been some discussion about a beautification strategy for the town, and I didn't know if the CAO might want to talk to that at all.
Yeah, happy to, through Counselor Belanger. What we will be doing over the next little while, I know there was a tour a couple of weeks ago, and council shared with us some of the issues that you have with the town. I think we all can see it. The town does need to pull up its socks a little bit, and we are a tourist town, beauty matters. We're going to be meeting as a group, I'm actually going to have a team meeting tomorrow with the leadership team, and talk about the various approaches that we can take. Updating bylaws is just one piece of it. I think having a forward-looking bylaw, which clearly articulates where we're trying to go, is a very positive step. But there are other things that we can do. I know, Deputy Mayor, you've talked a lot about sponsorship, Boulevard Beautification, getting corporate sponsors involved in that absolutely will be part of it. There is money in the 2024 budget that we've allocated towards beautification throughout the town. So I think where we are at right now is laying out the program, which we're going to do over the next month. I don't know if we'll get it back in December, just because we're going to run into Christmas holidays and that type of thing. So I would expect very early in January that we'll be in front of council with the whole beautification program that will outline all of the tools, the carrots and the sticks that we can use to hopefully focus our efforts. And the one thing I would also say is, I just mentioned focus, that it really should be focused on some key areas, so that we're not trying to take on everything in year one, but probably some key corridors, some key areas of town that we want to tackle in 2024, and then 2025, we can move and focus somewhere else, so that gradually over time we can really spruce up the town. So that's our initial thoughts, and we're going to be meeting tomorrow to lay out the framework for that program that we'll get in front of council shortly.
Thank you for that exciting update. I'm looking forward to that report. Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important to note on our general manager, Rogers', comments were that we will find a way to deal with issues that are swift. And I think that's part of the problem that we've had here in the past, is that we've had bylaws, but in order for us to enforce those bylaws, it's just, there's so much time allotted in order to get anything done. And that's not only frustrating, I think, for council and for the citizens who live here, both full-time and part-time, but I'm sure it's very frustrating for staff, because they're hearing it from the complainant in the first place often, and then they're hearing it from us. So it's coming in from both sides, if you will. And so I think what I really want to point out here, though, is how impressed I am with our staff's ability to implement, to hear what it is council's looking for, to be able to decipher that clearly and accurately, and then to go away and implement it. You know, I've had the privilege of living in this community for my whole life almost, and, you know, government doesn't happen quickly. But I'm proud to say that we've got a staff here today that, when council gives some direction, 99.9% of the time, they just get out and get it done. And last summer was a prime example to Director Rogers' points with respect to our friends, the Magic Mushroom House and our car rally folks. They were creative in using the municipal act, which is there for us to use and to make things happen. So I want to commend staff for that ability. I'm confident that as we move forward and we get this report back in January, that it's going to be what it is council's looking for, and that we are able to get out and, quite frankly, for lack of a better term, clean our town up. And not just for visitors and the fact that we're a tourist town, but, you know, I live here full-time, and when I drive through my community, I don't know about the rest of you, but I say, you know, this is just not right. And to Counselor Belanger's point about residents who have, you know, called, I've received these same calls, have gone out and seen a couple of these properties, one where a gentleman is dying of cancer. He's got six or eight months to live, and he's trying to sell his property to get his affairs in order to leave good things to his family for his legacy. And he has to take his property off the market because there's just no way in hell he's going to be able to sell it, because the neighbor is like Sanford and Son. And this didn't happen overnight. This happened over years. And so that's the problem with bylaws that are dealt with on a complaint basis. A, we pit neighbor against neighbor, which I don't think we should be doing. We're not the only community that came up with that idea, but we need to be more proactive. And I think as we're more proactive and we start to clean up the municipality, not only then from a residential standpoint, but from the municipality standpoint, we need to pull our socks up. We need to have more pride and care in our community and what we control and how that happens. But we rest assured that that all comes also with a price and a cost, and what we need to determine is what cost are we willing to pay, or what cost and value is the taxpayer willing to pay to do that? And I would say, out of the gate, they'll probably be screaming and yelling, absolutely not, we don't want to spend another nickel. But I think as they start to see their community looking pretty amazing, they'll be happy to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Any final comments? Counselor DeLeo?
Rachel, would you find it offensive if us counselors and the mayor were driving around and we see a property that we think you should take a look at it? Can we report it to you?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should defer the question to the clerk, because I do want to be mindful about council directing staff and what that would look like. I don't know if that would be a conflict of interest or if I'm hearing it wrong.
I'm happy to jump in there. Please feel free, if you want to direct them through me, and then I can pass them along to Rachel.
Right, so if we see something we find, you know, it shouldn't be here, like this needs to be looked at, I can just bring it to your attention and?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeLeo. Go ahead, Danny.
Actually, I think I'll take the opportunity through you, the chair, to also address something else, because the whole complaint process is something that I think we will bring some clarity to over the winter as well. You know, in my 20-plus years of doing this, I've never once been in court and been asked by a judge who filed the complaint. I've never once had to have a complainant come forward and give any evidence. The fact of the matter is, is that if, once we become aware of something, the evidence is normally quite evident. It's there before us, we take pictures. So that is one of the processes that I know causes a lot of discomfort in the community, and it's a process that I'm sure has evolved over time for a lot of good reasons. But frankly, at the end of the day, it's just not required, so it is something that will be taken a hard look at.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Rachel?
Thank you. Just one last note to hopefully wrap up the complaint process, just so everyone understands it a little bit more. We do most, basically all of our bylaws proactive, but there's definitely certain portions of those bylaws we don't do proactive. So for example, if it's a property standards complaint that's inside a dwelling, we need that complaint to be able to enter, or if it's something we can't see from the road or something like that, we do need reason to enter a property. Basically, if we have that complaint, then we have reason to believe there may be a violation, and then we can enter into, say, like a backyard that's fenced and we can't see it. But certainly for those things that we always see throughout town that we're just driving by and everything, we're doing those proactively, and I think Danny makes a great point.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll read the recommendation. The Joint Committee of the Whole and Council receives the Property Standards Committee minutes of June 20, 2023 for information. A mover and a seconder, please. Counselor White and Counselor Ego, all those in favor? And that carries. Moving on to 9.4.6, the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay Partnership Opportunities. This item was pulled by Counselor White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the, to walk around this one tightly and delicately, I like the one toe in the water approach with partnering with this group or offering them up a, like a facilities-in-kind donation. Can you just kind of let me know what other municipalities offer? Is it cash or venue support? And do you feel that if this will attract them to actually use the space or not, like how is this going to be received?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, to Counselor White. So the other municipalities that are calling with Blue Mountains and Meaford and Clearview, and they've made financial contributions. To my knowledge, you're the only municipality to offer up facilities to host the events. I noticed a lot of the events are to the west side of the area, so this would introduce the group into our community, introduce them to the T-PAL, see how our community participates in the meeting, gets the uplift, and we get a better sense of what that means to our community. So certainly want to not walk away from the opportunity, I think we need to explore the opportunity. Part of the staff's consideration here is the group is a think and do, advertise themselves as a think and do group. Our council, our staff here right now are in do mode, and we have a lot of things underway, you know, we're working on affordable housing, we opened a medical clinic, we're working on a high school. We're fully engaged in a lot of conversations right now. So I think this would be an opportunity for them to come in, introduce themselves to municipality, to our residents, to ourselves. We can attend and get a better sense of what they do and how we best work with them moving forward, and maybe in the, you know, next year's budget, we could have a look at the financial aspects.
Thank you, jury. Follow-up?
Thank you for that, I do appreciate it. I, you know, as a taxpayer, in times when we're thinking about where things need to be, you know, seriously evaluated, and although their request for cash donation wasn't significantly high, I do believe that taking this cost-cutting approach in this one is very representative of where we are, is our values as a town, and the direction of council, our commitments to the community. So thank you for that, and hopefully they do. And hopefully they do take us up on it because we do have literally the best facility to host events in, in the area by a, by a long shot. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor White. Counselor Timms?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. I attended a most recent event about moving your community to sustainability through a green economy, and we were very well res, well resem, represented, sorry, getting tired. COVID shot yesterday. At that event, we had town staff there, we had the climate action team, they actually were panelists. It was a great opportunity to reconnect with some of our regional partners and ministry partners. And I think that there's some great opportunity by being engaged with the institute. I did get a chance to speak to the deputy CAO and understood, you know, how he landed on that, and I support it. But it would be terrific to get some of these events closer to home. There's a good one coming up, but it's in Meaford. And, you know, it's a long drive for a lazy girl in the morning, but I would love to see them come and enjoy our new facility. So I do support the report.
Thank you, Counselor Timms. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the report and I support the offer that we would make here. I guess I struggle with how many of these organizations or similar organizations or other organizations that are out there. If I think of all the money that all these municipalities are giving to different organizations, think tanks, and, you know, what, what should we be doing? How should we be doing it? Then we actually just pooled all that money and did something. Affordable housing is the best example I can think. If we took all the billions or trillions of dollars that we spend on every organization that is out there talking about what we should do to build affordable housing, and we just pooled that money and built affordable housing, we'd be a heck of a lot further ahead. And so I'm not saying they haven't done and they don't have great merit and do great things to them or any other organization, but we just seem to be inundated with all of these different organizations of any kind that are, you know, we've got an idea, we've got some real smart people, let's, let's give them some money and sit down and talk about it. Well, talk is cheap, unfortunately not to the taxpayer, but it is to the people who sit on these different committees. And so I support this. I support the offer that we're going to put to them and, and, and hope that they, they take us up on it and enjoy our facility, and we'll be better for it, I'm sure. But it's a lot of money on a lot of different things that I'm not sure, should we get a great result out of a lot of it? And I'm not saying specifically these folks, I'm saying just in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Are there any final comments? Seeing none, I think it's a great idea. I think it's really creative solution finding. And, and like Counselor Timms, I, I hope that they do take advantage and, and come and see our beautiful community and, and see the innovation that, that our senior team is, is implementing to help address some of their, these issues. Okay, so seeing no more comments, I will read the recommendations, a long one, that the report titled Institute of Southern Georgian Bay Partnership Opportunities to the Joint Committee of the Whole meeting of November 16th, 2023 be received, and that the deputy CAO be directed to offer the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay, TISGB, an in-kind contribution for the use of the TwinPad and Library multipurpose facility to host two regional summits/forums in line with established council's priorities. See, any mover, a mover and a seconder? Counselor Ego, Mayor Smith, all those in favor? And that carries. Moving on to item number 9.4.8, this is in regards to the sale of surplus land policy. And I was, I polled this report just because I wanted to give our CAO an opportunity to sort of speak to this report publicly so that the public fully understands with complete transparency how the surplus of lands will be dealt with. Please, Andrew.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll tag team this a little bit with Nicole, if that's okay. So Nicole and Laura were the ones that authored the report. But essentially, what this does is it gives the ability to move a little quicker. For example, if there's a small piece of land on a roadway, a little triangle, you know, not worth much money, we, we can just proceed, get an opinion of value, and, and do the sale. That's something that we don't think it really needs to come to council and bog down a council agenda. For any large sale of land, we would absolutely still bring that to council. We would have an opinion of value, and council would authorize that transaction. So there's a threshold upon which, that the authority to delegate to myself would be. It's 50,000 and under, I believe. So any piece of land, 50,000 and under, staff would just have the ability to proceed and sell if we felt it was in the best interest. But one of the other, the subtle changes, which will actually help quite a bit in the process, right now appraisals are required before you sell a piece of land. Appraisals cost money, they take time. In all circumstances, they may not be the best approach. Oftentimes, it's more useful for us to reach out to the local real estate community and seek one, two, three opinions of value from local realtors who are really in touch with the market in Wasaga Beach. So we actually find that oftentimes more useful than the actual appraisal, again, which costs money. So that is the one recommendation here, is that we have a bit of latitude to determine when an appraisal is appropriate and when it makes more sense to just go seek an opinion of value from a, a local real estate agent. So having that latitude will, will actually help us move a lot quicker. I'll turn it over to Nicole. Is there anything that I missed that you want to just flag in the, in the report?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Last meeting, we did have the report from the office of the CAO where we listed properties that have now been declared surplus. So what this policy really does, to the CAO's point, it allows us to really maximize our asset potential, divest of property, promote that growth and development that we're seeking to do, as well as reducing our liability, which is important. There's two statements in the policy that commits to affordable housing and attainable housing. So we will look at town-owned land through that lens first and foremost, before divesting of any property as well. Some of the other, the CAO spoke as well, so it defines fully marketable land and limited marketable land. And that allows for the direct negotiation on that limited marketable land, which means that it's not even suitable due to size, zoning, and topography, I guess, for an inta lot. So that would, all other land that was deemed fully marketable would be done through RAP and MLS listing or expression of interest. We also are going to require deposits now. Often, and what I've heard from the deputy clerk, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, is that in the past, we've had requests to purchase land, and we get through the process, we consult with legal, and then they abandon the request, and the town and taxpayers are fit with this bill. So what we want to do is reduce the liability there and ensure that the person that's requesting to purchase property is responsible for all costs, an administrative fee, deposit, and legal costs, registration as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think the policy is a great policy. I think it's warranted. I think we've got a lot of, or I know we have a ton of municipal land that we've had for years that the municipality simply doesn't need. And I think this will be a, a great way to start towards paying down some of the debts on the arena zone and so forth as we move forward. So a good policy. I have no issue with the $50,000 on these small portions. And the only question I have is, have we, I, I agree that we don't necessarily need an appraisal on every piece of property. Often, if not more often, the realtors, local realtors will give you a better value of the property than, than any appraiser does based on current market. But usually when a realtor does that, there's some expectation that they may receive a listing. So have we thought about compensation to realtors, if not a listing, and having to pay percentages, which can be often quite expensive as well? Have we thought about or talked to any realtors as if, if we're doing that, is there a fee they would apply and, and what would that be? Because I'm, I'm quite confident, when I look at the amount of properties we may be able to move over the next several years or few years, that realtors at some point are going to say, whoa, whoa, I don't work for free.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Thanks. Through you, Madam Chair. I'll start, and hopefully the CAO will jump in. It would be probably prudent to get a list of realtors as well and start negotiating what those, what's the word, compensation would look like for any disposition of property that we did divest through a realtor and a brokerage. So that's something that we could look at, is getting a broker of record or a list of broker of record.
And I, I would simply add, the goal here is not to waste people's time. If there are properties that the town is looking to divest, you've already declared a, a number of them surplus, I think we're committed to move forward that, with, with that process. We also want to do it equitably. So there are multiple brokerages in town. I think it's prudent upon us to ensure that it gets spread amongst it all, so it's not just one that we go to each time. So we may want to seek multiple opinions, but I do believe as we start to bring on a realtor or a broker to assist with, with the sale, that we do spread that around so that realtors know that we're not just wasting time when we come out and seek an opinion, that there is some business that would ultimately come from that. So I hope, I hope they will see that and, and choose to work with us. But if there is a, a need to, to have some kind of fees established, Nicole and myself can, can talk with the local realtors and, and see what that could look like.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay, seeing none, I'll read the motion. That the report titled Sale of Surplus Land Policy to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council meeting of November 16th, 2023 be received, and that the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council approve the revised sale of surplus land policy, and that bylaw 2023-109, being a bylaw to adopt, the sale of surplus land policy be brought forward and by, and bylaw 2014-21 be repealed. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor DeLeo, a seconder, Counselor Timms, all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Moving on to 9.4.9, Advisory Committee Review. This item was polled both by Counselor Timms and myself. So Counselor Timms, if you'd like to proceed, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did get to have a, a really robust conversation with the clerk with respect to this. And, and upon reading the report, I was concerned about the historical advisory committee, mainly because we had a, a deputation or may just have been during a public forum from people in the community that wanted to see that committee continue and had even offered some volunteerism. The reason why that one spoke to me was because with our anniversary, 50 years next year, I thought that there would be an opportunity for the advisory committee to kind of dig in and, and get involved with a celebration like that. Also was looking back at their minutes and, and as well as their terms of reference. So if I might ask the clerk to elaborate a little bit on what you told me in our conversation, I'd be obliged.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So with the historical advisory committee, we have a robust lineup of volunteers that are assisting every day at the archives with our coordinator to ensure that we're recognizing the rich history of Wasaga Beach. So with that, we looked at the terms of reference. The terms of reference for that committee were a little bit blurred in that some of the mandate within it falls under the Heritage Act, which is a heavy legisla, piece of legislation, and it's not really conducive to what the committee was really doing. So instead of having a formal committee, we encourage members of the community to, if they know of rich history, to bring it to the archives, sit down with a great group of volunteers, and be a volunteer themselves to ensure that we're capturing it all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I understand the council's concerns. However, I'm a, I'm a big believer that if you want to slow something down, create a committee, and the bigger the committee, the slower we move. We've got a lot of great volunteers in our community that have volunteered and done a great job, but when we look at some of these committees, they just haven't unfortunately been able to accomplish a lot of tasks over the years. And I, I believe that if we were able to speak to those volunteers and others and have staff involved as well, and create task forces with specific items that council and our staff may think that are required in our community, with a clear mandate to move forward to accomplish specific detailed tasks, that we, it can get a lot more done, be a lot more productive, and create a lot of greater opportunities within our community. So I, I support this fully. I understand that there will be some folks who are upset, but I think we encourage them to, to seek membership on a task force. Their efforts will be probably better used because they'll have clear mandates as to what it is we're looking for and, and be able to help us in a much greater capacity than they are now. So I support this fully. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Are there any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Belanger.
Yes, actually, I had neglected to add this. I had it flagged for polling, didn't write it down, but I just wanted some public discussion because when you, when you read it, some of it, when you say you're not going to have a youth committee, and I think we should inform the public that there, that it wasn't that we didn't try, that there wasn't a lot of response to request. There's also some committees that are active now, and, and people will be impacted. But again, there was good reason. I, I think the mayor said earlier, like, one of the things that we did early on in this council is we created a management structure that allowed us to be more strategic. And very often, we're able to give council direction and, and staff does the work that a committee did. So there were just a couple of points that I didn't want people reading it and sort of saying, oh, jeez, we're, you know, we're getting rid of historical committee, or we're getting rid of youth committee, or we're looking at, you know, the, what, Healthy Community Committee, which is in existence. It's good reason. This is like, we're reviewing everything to be more efficient and more productive. And I, I support what we're doing. We're also adding the Affordable Housing Task Force and the Environmental Committee. And I know some of those slows down, but on, on those two items, and it was mentioned earlier, you could, we could probably be a full-time, 40-hour-a-week job just to read the information that we receive in council related to the environment and affordable housing. And sometimes when we have a group of knowledgeable people that can do a lot of that research and, and boil it down for council and staff, it's a, it's a positive thing. So I, I'm very supportive, but I, I want, didn't want anyone thinking that any of this is not important to this council. It all is. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Belanger. Any other final comments? I polled this one as well because in regards to the Youth Advisory Committee. And so I understand that historically, this, this group has been tried and tried and tried and unable to meet quorum and to really fully engage the young people in our community. I did want to share the CAO and I were, we had a conversation as a team about this particular matter. And I think the idea that you brought forward, Andrew, in terms of a youth symposium or a forum on an annual basis, could be an opportunity to sort of fulfill this gap because I, I don't want us to lose sight on how we intentionally develop leadership in our, in our young people. And I think that is more needed than in any other community because we don't have a high school, right? So that disconnect is real. And so I would like to see that, and request that staff be directed to, to take that idea and massage it through and see what is realistic that could be done. And, and then maybe if we form a group to work on that initiative, because that won't be light lifting. That, that would, that could be quite a dynamic opportunity. Go ahead. Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I agree wholeheartedly. And I just wanted to share, a very interesting Monday and Tuesday of this week, we had hundreds of our community out to talk about the beachfront. And that specific point was raised by multiple residents. They said, this is wonderful that we've got so many people out, but there's no youth here. And what do the youth in our community want to see on our, on our beachfront? And so a summit like that, symposium like that, could be a real focused opportunity for us to ask their opinion on what they'd like to see. And there's multiple other things we can engage on, but... we can engage on, but that's a model that has been used in other municipalities, and I think it's quite a, quite a, an effective way. So I'm more than happy to, to work with you to, to get that off the ground.
Fantastic. Thank you. Because I was thinking about this more since our conversation. And, you know, I'm sure young people would have a lot of feedback in regards to transportation, right? Hours of transportation, where there maybe should be a shelter, about pathways and lighting and all kinds of great stuff, as well as potentially some businesses they'd like to see in the community and, and whatnot. And if we look at it to even be like a leadership development type diploma-like program, where they actually get a certificate, they come before council, you know, if they complete all the roundtables within the forum or something like that through a passport, they get a certificate that then can go on their resume, you know, so that we're intentionally providing some tools to help elevate the experience. Not only we're getting the value out of them, but we're giving them incredible value back. Go ahead, Pam.
Please let us know how we can help through the library. Happy to take part.
Fantastic. I, I could see so many collaborations, because I'm sure a lot of leaders in our community would want to get involved with this as well. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe that the committee idea did come through the Youth Strategy Service Report that was done in 2019. And in that report, it spoke about a committee or a working group. And we, today we had a presentation about the youth center. So tapping in on where those kids are congregating, and then doing things that are, fit more their age. Let's do Q R codes where they can enter a quick survey. This council has supported public engagement more than I think ever has been done. We have talked with Saga, so if we can just ensure that we're hitting that market, using the youth center in the library, and obviously the local schools, the E A and I are going to one of the schools on Tuesday to present for Local Government Week, although it's passed, and we had a group in here as well during Local Government Week to engage and educate. So I think we'll continue that as well.
Fantastic. Because, not to belabor this point, but in previous years, I, I started an event, a Youth Leadership Gala, because there were no events that really recognized and celebrated the amazing accomplishments that were happening in our community. And we had so many leaders at that time that were, were cooking, baking cakes and selling them to donate the money, like, motor, the motorcycle journey where she went with Bruce Ro-, Bruce Johnson and, and raised a ton of money for sick kids. And it was, it was a red carpet event, and we fed them a meal. Mayor Smith was elected at that point, that was when you sat on, you were mayor first elected, and was our keynote speaker in inspirational talks. And so I'd love to sort of be able to look at that kind of thing again, because I think our, our young people need as much support as possible, especially in, in these sort of grimmer times, right? So I appreciate all that feedback and, and to take that back. And thank you, Pam, for your offer. I think this could be really fantastic. I look forward to see where it goes. Any further comments before I read the motion? Mayor Smith?
I think it's just important to comment how disappointed I am in your lack of enthusiasm for this topic, Deputy Mayor Snell. Good on you. It's, it's amazing to, you can just see the excitement building as the more she talks.
Yeah, it's funny, you know, two, two things are coming out, sponsorships and, and our youth. Okay, where am I in this list here? Sorry, just one second. Yeah, it's a big, a long one. Okay, so no further comments or questions? Great. I'll read the motion. That the report titled Advisory Committee Review to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting of November 16th, 2023 be received, that the following advisory committees be removed from the town's advisory committee structure, Youth Advisory Committee, Historical Advisory Committee, Healthy Community Networks Committee, Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Affordable Housing Committee, and that a C A O department-led task force for affordable housing and C A O department-led working group for the equity, diversity, and inclusion be formed, that the bylaws 2019-37, 2019-105, and 2023-23 be repealed, and that the clerk be directed to conduct a comprehensive review of the town's committee and board structure, terms of reference, and policies and procedures. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Ego and Counselor DeLeo, all those in favor? And that carries. Okay, final item in this section, 9.4.10, 2024 Budget, Public Engagement, and this was pulled by Counselor Timms. Go ahead, Counselor Timms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And really just a comment, I wanted to commend our, our Treasury Department on the hard work that you did on the budget, in fact, all of the staff with respect to that. And although it's still draft, I think we're getting there. I, I did want to comment on the effort that was made for public engagement, and, and that was a, a bit of an issue for me. I heard so much during the campaign time and, and certainly during the 2023 process that people wanted to weigh in. And while I could tell you that, I'm a little disappointed in the, the numbers of people that did take the time and, and filled out a survey or showed up to a meeting. I'm very happy that we did that. And I think some really terrific comments came from that, and I, I want to just thank your department for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Timms. Any other comments or questions? I think we all feel that way as well. I think the public engagement has been fantastic. So thank you very much, Jocelyn, to you and your team for everything for this, this budget. Okay, reading the motion, that the report titled 2024 Budget-Public Engagement to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting of November 16th, 2023 be received for information. A mover and a seconder, please? Counselor DeLeo, Counselor White, all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. This ends my section, and I now hand it back, please, to Mayor Smith.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Snell. Now moving on to item number 10.1, Rise Recommendation Resolved at the Committee of the Whole Session. Rise and move into council session to receive the report on the proceedings of the Committee of the Whole Session. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor White, Deputy Mayor Snell, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 11, Council Session Consideration Adoption of Committee of the Whole Recommendations. In a resolved at the Committee of the Whole Session, rise and move into council session to receive a report on the proceedings of the Committee of the Whole Session. Could I have a mover and a seconder on this, please? Counselor DeLeo and Counselor Ego, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Item number 12, Consent List. We have resolved that the council session of the Joint Committee of the Whole, council hereby receive the November 16th, 2023 Consent List Items 12, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. I'm not aware of any items being pulled. So this is with respect to the Joint Committee of the Whole Council Meeting Minutes of October 26th, 19, sorry, 2023, and a special council meeting minutes of October 30th, 2023. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Ego and Counselor Timms, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Item number 13 is council requested staff reports. You've all seen the list of staff reports there. Is there anyone who wants to add or speak to that? Counselor Timms?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to request a staff report regarding options and opportunities to ensure our children have safe routes to school. You will recall that a deputation from Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit took place at the September 14th meeting regarding the UNIS On the Move Initiative, particularly focusing on findings from Worsley Elementary School. Public health nurse Sherry Diaz, excuse me, outlined many concerns parents shared that prevented them from feeling comfortable with their kids walking to school. Most recently, I've been contacted by a member of the Parents Council of St. Noel Elementary School, expressing great concern with traffic speed and congestion on Ramblewood Drive. The parent council feels quite strongly that there is a great need for crossing guards, and asked me to bring this matter forward to council. Our own priorities identify these issues. In the Complete Neighborhood category, Priority 15, we wish to explore traffic calming in vulnerable locations, particularly schools, and Priority 16, Implement Safe Rules to, Routes to School. On September 14th, a motion was carried to receive the deputation for the information, but we did not add an action to the motion. Your Worship, I'm willing to put a motion on the floor to request a, a report concerning traffic flows, crosswalks, traffic calming, and potentially a crossing guard program, if I can get a seconder.
Certainly, it's an excellent idea, Counselor. Can Counselor have a seconder? Counselor White? Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Counselor. Any, anyone else have any questions with respect to this list of items? Just a couple of quick questions then from myself, the municipal parking lot payment and access arrangement options, and then the backyard chickens, the parking options. Any idea when we'll see something back on that, Madam Clerk or Mr. C A O?
Through you, Your Worship. The tasks have been assigned, and staff are actively working on those reports to bring them back to council.
All right, thank you. And then the backyard chickens, it's interesting, I, I received a couple of emails in the last week from some citizens, including a past member of a council who is in the chicken business, I guess you could say, and is very knowledgeable on this, sent me some information and reports. It was quite eye-opening with respect to, to backyard chickens and, and the negative things that, that come from that with respect to disease and so on and so forth. So I would be happy to pass that on to staff and members of council to read as we consider that. If there's nothing else, we'll now move on to item number 14, Notices of Motion. I don't believe we have any today. And then item number 15, Closed Session. We are not going into closed session today either. So moving on to 16, Bylaws Resolved that the following bylaw be received and be deemed and read a first, second, and third time, passed and numbered as follows. 2023-109, a bylaw to adopt the revised sale of surplus land policy, and 2023-110, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation, the town of Wasaga Beach at its regular meeting held on November 16th, 2023. Mover and a, and a seconder, please? Counselor Ego and Counselor DeLeo, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously, and this meeting is adjourned.